Tim Hodge, can you hear us? Currently you're muted, Tim, so.
There you go. How's that?
That's perfect. And your camera looks good.
Good. I paid fifty bucks for it. It should look really good.
I don't know if you heard that. I'll just not repeat it.
I can imagine.
Okay, I'm ready to go. You guys there?
Like, everyone's on mute right now.
Okay.
We're there. We just all muted ourselves.
We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start off tonight with our pledge of allegiance. If we could have Commander Myers give us, lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the roll call, I'd like to mention to everybody that's watching that we have a new system here we're working with tonight, new computer screens and controls that we have. So you might see us looking down, trying to figure out, okay, what are we supposed to do now? What button are we supposed to push? And please bear with us while we learn this new system, but I think it's going to make a much clearer picture for you to see. And the sound system in the council chambers for sure, and maybe on TV is going to be much improved. So thank you for bearing with us. And with that, I'll ask for the roll call.
Councilmember Litzter?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kavanaugh? I apologize. Councilmember Luvenos?
Here via Zoom. And I just want to explain that I'm here via Zoom because there was exposure of a family member possibly to COVID. And so I just want to make sure everyone is safe. And that's why I'm participating via Zoom.
Thank you. I apologize, Mayor Pro-Tim Kavanaugh.
Here.
And Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
Happy New Year, everyone. As we move into 2021, we are in the middle of another spike in positive COVID cases in Ventura County. While we encourage Simi Valley residents to support Simi Valley businesses by getting takeout from our restaurants and visiting our retail stores, we also remind everyone to wear their masks, use hand sanitizer, and wash their hands often. To comply with the limitations on gatherings, Simi Valley joins the other nine cities and the county by holding our council meetings without the public in attendance. However, there are still opportunities for the public to participate in this council meeting. The public statements are received via Zoom. As noted on the agenda, the public was encouraged to register no later than 3:30 PM today if they wish to speak via Zoom. Written comment are also accepted by email. Those emails have already been provided to the city council. They will be made part of the record but will not be read by the city clerk this evening.
The city thanks you. There, I just did the first mistake. I forgot to push the correct button. The city thanks you for your patience. During this local emergency, the city continues to provide opportunities for the public to participate in the business of the city and for their voices to be heard. With that said, we'll move on with tonight's meeting. At this point, I'll have the agenda review. Is there any council members that have any questions or comments regarding the agenda?
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Please vote yes for me.
Please vote yes for me as well.
I've got my. It's over here.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, time for the declaration of conflict. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any manner on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Anybody have a conflict? Okay, seen none. Move forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, A Certificate of Appreciation to Outgoing Planning Commissioner John Castleberry Jr. And Sean Gibson is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. This is for our outgoing planning commissioner, John Castleberry Jr. He had had to resign the planning commission as he moved on to another location outside the city for employment purposes. And I'll read his proclamation. Whereas John Castleberry Jr. served on the planning commission from December 17th, 2018, to December 4th, 2020, serving one year as commissioner and one year as vice chairperson. Whereas during his tenure as a planning commissioner, Commissioner Castleberry devoted an extensive amount of time and effort to the betterment of the city of Simi Valley, was committed to learning and promoting principles of urban planning, and consistently held upheld high standards for quality project design. And whereas Commissioner Castleberry's service to the community included membership on Executive Board of Neighborhood Council Number Four and as a board member for the local nonprofit organization Kids and Families. And whereas the city of Simi Valley desires to express its appreciation to Commissioner Castleberry for his contributions to the city of Simi Valley and its citizens, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Simi Valley that expresses not only for itself but for those citizens at large, its thanks and appreciation to Planning Commissioner Castleberry for his faithful and dedicated service to the city of Simi Valley while serving as a member of our planning commission. Presented this 11th day of January, 2021.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll give it an opportunity to each council member speak. And we'll start with Councilmember Luvenos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank John Castleberry for the phenomenal job he did these past two years. You know, when I nominated him and he was appointed as planning commissioner, I knew he was the right man for the job. He knows the city. He knows every neighborhood. He is very dedicated and was always at City Hall. A lot of times I was there with him, just dedicating his time to the community. And basically had a overall, long-term, big picture for what he wanted the future of Simi Valley to be like. And he was very in touch with the needs of our working families, of our working residents, of every generational need from our schoolchildren, school-aged children all the way up to our senior citizens and everyone in between. And I just want to commend John for the phenomenal job he did as planning commissioner. There was a huge transition with the RENA and a lot of state mandates coming down. And John was always on top of it. We had a lot of discussions about, you know, how we could best serve our businesses, our local businesses, and our economic and social structure here in Simi Valley. And he was always on board with that. So I just want to thank John for his two years of service. And I know countless, countless, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours that he dedicated to being planning commissioner. And I know he got along really well with all the other planning commissioners and, you know, didn't always agree with everyone but was able to have wonderful conversations on, in terms of what was best for the community. And I want to thank John for his service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge, comments?
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Castleberry for his service. I too hear nothing but good things from the planning commissioners about Mr. Castleberry. And I wish him well on everything that he does in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Litzter?
Thank you. I too wanted to lend my voice to appreciation for John, for Mr. Castleberry. He was, as I observed him, he was most anxious and active in trying to research and truly be a contributor to the planning process. And that I had the privilege of speaking with him this weekend. And I know that he is, that his big regret in taking this new position was leaving this position on the, on the planning commission, that he truly loved his work there and, and loved the camaraderie and the, and the work done on that together with the other commissioners. But, so he will be missed, but very much appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to thank John for all of his time and effort on the planning commission. I first met John in 2016 when I was running for city council. He came to a meet and greet and wanted to talk and explained how interested he was in our city and in the planning of it. Like Councilmember Luvenos indicated, he has a big picture and has a really good handle on what is best for the, the working families. He's going to be sorely missed by our planning commission. I know, I heard nothing but compliments about him from the other commissioners. And Simi Valley in itself, he's a major loss to us. And John, I wish you the best in your new position. And I know you'll be back because your family is all here. So that's a good thing. And a final thing, congrats to your mom on her Lou Roth Award. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that the few times that I've watched the planning commission meetings, it was very obvious that Mr. Castleberry was well-prepared, understood what he was looking at, and brought very relevant discussion to the table. It was also a pleasure, it was a true pleasure, to see that when he did not agree, or maybe some other commissioners did not agree with him, there was no sign of emotion and discontent. It was strictly professional. And he brought an awful lot, in my opinion, of integrity to the table and quality information to the commission. And I'd also like to thank whoever put the fine words together for the resolution. Because that, that, that said it very clearly what this council thinks of John and his actions and the service he provided this community. So thank you very much, John.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item two, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. All comments submitted by email have been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk tonight. All persons who register by 3:30 PM today will be called on to speak during this public statement's item two for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item, or one member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, Mr. Joe Pachowski.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the council. I'm, I wanted to speak tonight because I noticed that there's an individual that's been proposed to be on the planning commission. And I find it problematic. And that would be, that would be the appointment of Dawn Gray. Dawn Gray ran for city council to, actually ran for mayor back in 2018. And she, she, while she happened to run with Councilwoman Luvenos, that's not the problem. The, the problem, I, I've got a couple of problems. The first problem I have is that for, for two years now, we've heard Councilwoman Luvenos talk about how there were so many people in our town that are underrepresented. And given the opportunity to appoint the new planning commissioner, rather than selecting a person of color for this role, she's opted to select her former running mate. The other problem I have with, with, with Ms. Gray's appointment has to do with the fact that in May of 2019, less than two years ago, she was arrested, I believe, when confronted at an incident in her home. And she was arrested for resisting an officer. And so I've got a really big issue with, with putting someone on our planning commission. I can't believe that, that, that there's not a more qualified individual to serve on the planning commission than Dawn Gray. And I would, I personally, I'd love, love it to be a person of color. I'm sure there's somebody out there that could, that could do a better job than, than, than someone who's, who's had problems with our, with the law, with law enforcement in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only speaker?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 3A1, Appointment of Planning Commissioners. And Sean Gibson is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. Planning commissioners serve on a term, on a commission concurrent with the nominating council member's term on the city council. The mayor and each member of the city council are responsible for nominating one planning commissioner. Upon the, upon the approval of a majority vote of the city council, the nominated individuals shall be appointed by the mayor. And now in this case, the mayor was reelected in November. And one council member was elected in November and one council member was reelected. So that's three commissioners. In addition on this item, due to Commissioner Tolson's resignation from the council, we are also appointing a commissioner for Luvenos.
Castleberry.
Castleberry, sorry.
They're both Johns. We understand.
Yes, Commissioner Castleberry's resignation, the appointment of Luvenos's commissioner would also occur with this item. It is recommended that the city council interview and nominate, and the mayor, Mayor Mashburn's nominee, Tim Hodge. Mayor Pro-Tim Didi-Kavanaugh's nominee, Alan Mann. Councilmember Elaine Lister's nominee, John Tolson. And Councilmember Ruth Luvenos's nominee, Dawn Gray, for the planning commission for terms to become effective immediately. Each of our commissioner nominees are on Zoom tonight, and they're available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I have a suggestion for the method by which we do this. I'd like to ask the, the council, because this is the night that we would interview those that are running. And with, if there's no objection to it, I would like to just say the three sitting commissioners that we do not interview them. They're already sitting. And there hasn't been any type of complaints brought against them. And then we'll give a, a period of time if anybody wants to ask any questions of Dawn Gray. Is that okay with you folks? Okay, so would one of you make a motion to?
I would move it.
Mayor, if I, if I may, this is Councilmember Luvenos. You know, I, I'm not sure if that's a fair and equitable process to single out my nominee. While I understand that all three of Mr. Hodge, Mr. Mann, and Mr. Tolson have already been sitting planning commissioners, there, you know, have, could have been activities that happened the past four years that we might want to question that. And I question the validity of singling out my nominee and whether or not that's a fair practice, especially given that she's the only female nominee.
Okay, well, I understand. But I, I also would like to say, I, I, I think the term singled out is incorrect. It's just simply that Ms. Gray is the newest and doesn't hold the seat right now. And there may not be any questions. I have no idea. So.
So are you saying, Mayor, may I ask you if that means that after we question Ms. Gray, then we can ask questions of the other planning commissioners?
I think if you have questions of the planning commissioners, I think now would be the time to do that. I just wanted to speed things along. But if you have questions, let's go ahead and let you ask questions of the other.
Mayor, respectfully, I would ask that we table the motion of approving the sitting planning commissioners until Ms. Gray is questioned, if she's the only one that people have questions over. There may not be any questions at all.
That's, that's exactly what I said in the beginning.
I, I don't know that, to be honest, that it makes a difference. I think if I were to go ahead and make the motion, that we, just make it.
I think if you were to ask for the floor.
I'm sorry. I was trying to make what you'd requested.
Okay.
I apologize.
Go ahead. You have the floor.
I apologize. I was going to go forward with the motion that we, I'm, I'm hearing you, Councilmember Luvenos. I think to the mayor's point, because Ms. Gray would be, would is, would be new, obviously we have questions. I just think it would be easiest to go ahead and motion the approval of Commissioners Hodge, Mann, and Tolson. And then, then we can look at the new appointment separately, just because I think that that is something we want to have a conversation about.
Yeah. And if, if after that you want to ask them questions, let's do it.
Well, Mayor, we need a second on the motion before we can have discussion. And then I would like to have discussion on the motion. Respectfully so.
A second.
Mayor, I would respectfully request that we be allowed to ask questions of Commissioner Hodge, Mann, and Tolson.
And after we do the same with potential Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll open that floor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so. Okay, what we'll do is reverse it. I don't have any problems with that. Does anybody have a problem with that? We'll just reverse it. Will that make you satisfied?
I'm just asking for an equitable process, Mayor.
And that's the process that I was trying to bring forward. So, okay, moving forward now, I'm sorry, Ms. Gray, or.
Mayor, are we withdrawing the motion?
I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the motion's been withdrawn. I'd like to hear a motion that says we will first interview Dawn Gray for planning commissioner.
I move to interview Dawn Gray for planning commissioner.
A second.
Okay, any question? Wait a minute. Okay, any question? Wait a minute. I was interrupted. That was a motion to appoint.
No, a motion to interview.
To interview. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so the motion to interview Dawn Gray, and you second. So, all in favor? Call for the vote.
Please vote yes for me.
Please vote yes for me also. This is Judge.
Okay, so we'll start the interview process. Waiting for the screen to come back. There's Dawn's back. And we'll start with Councilmember Luvenos. You can go ahead and start your interview.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Gray, I read your bio, and I'd like to know if you could tell me what other volunteer work you've done in the community of Simi Valley?
Um, yeah, I've been on a lot of different nonprofits and not-for-profit organizations. My main function has primarily been either a controller or the treasurer, because that's a position that typically nobody volunteers for. And since I do have my accounting degree, and I've got my enrolled agent license, I'm usually the first one nominated and usually not challenged. And that can be unfortunate times, because then I can never get anybody to, to take over my positions. I've been on the Neighborhood Council for, for one term, and I did apply for this last term, was interviewed with, by Mayor Mashburn and, and Councilmember Kavanaugh, but was not appointed on this last cycle. I plan to continue to, to apply, because I do feel, feel that the Neighborhood Councils are extremely important for our community. That is, is one of the best places where the community themselves get to voice how they feel about a project coming into their community. And I, I think it's really important that the city establish that. I honor and respect that they've continued this tradition. I believe it is in, in our written rules, but the fact that if, if a project comes through to, to the Planning Commissioner, to the City Council, and has not gone through the Neighborhood Councils, from what I have heard from Emily, that it typically gets kicked back to the Neighborhood Councils, which I think is extremely important. As a Neighborhood Council member, I was informing our community of, of any projects that came through. I was on Neighborhood Council Two, which I believe is now Neighborhood Council One. I've also been, VIDA, which is the Volunteer Income Tax Programs. I've been on those projects for many years. I've actually, am working with somebody in the community to try to get one started for Simi Valley, and it's a long process, since you do need to have multiple people in, in, in the community eligible to be able to work through those processes. I started volunteering years back. I've lived in Simi Valley for 26 years. We bought our first home in 1994, at the, kind of at the bottom of the market. And unfortunately, we couldn't afford a home that a lot of people would want for their first homes. And so we ended up with a fixer-upper that took us a good five years to, to, to bring to the standards that we loved. And, and the community in the neighborhood, we fell in love with Simi. We were only planning on staying here for a few years, and found that Simi Valley, the warmth, the, the people in the community, the restaurants, everything about Simi, that we're a hop, skip, and a jump to LA, so we can still go in and get all of the, the crazy excitement of LA, that it's very close to be able to go home and, and have this community that we have, this very small knit community. This past year, I also, at my own cost, I sewed over 500 masks for people, essential workers, that I made sure that, I know that there were some people that were making masks, or asking people to make masks for them to, to sell. I hooked up with multiple organizations that were making masks, and then providing them to the essential workers or people of low income. So, that was really important for me to be able to do that. And, you know, the cost wasn't that much, but it was just something that I felt really good about. I've also volunteered for women's health organizations. I was the only female as the treasurer for a men's project for, for many, many years. And I'm not going to name the actual nonprofits, because I don't feel that that's in my, that's, that's up to those organizations, if they wanted to disclose whether or not I was on them or not. But I've, over the years, have always been on some sort of a project. I moved to California back in 1987, and at the time, I was Naval Aviator's wife. And so I became very involved in the Point Magus Women's, for the Naval Aviators Officers' Wives Annual Fundraiser Event. And so that's kind of where I kind of started getting into the fundraising events, because it's, it's a lot of fun to be able to be involved in something, see something grow, see something build, and then find that it's become successful, and you've done something good for your community. And currently, I am on the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation, and I work very well with David Misco and Larry, can never remember how to pronounce his last name. They're on our, are the treasurer, the financial committee, and, and we're having a fantastic time going through COVID, and not being able to do any fundraising events, but we're certainly trying. So, that's my community service. Oh, and I also tried to start a Neighborhood Watch up in Big Sky, that we have almost 800 homes. And so our HOA had stated that they would help with the Neighborhood Watch if we could get each and every one of the communities. And we've got 11 communities up here. And so they had said that if we could get all the communities working together, and everybody was on board, that they would help. But we, it was just too big of a project for 800 homes. But we had a good time trying. It took us about nine months, and, and we got pretty close. And, you know, hopefully, at one point, we'll still be able to do so. But that was during those 2015, 16 break-ins. So, we would sit outside in our front yards and making sure that at least there was a, a presence of the community, and that typically scared anybody away.
Great. Can I ask you another question? Do you have any background in urban planning or architecture, engineering, anything that would qualify you for this position?
I originally, as a, as a, as a child, or as a teenager, I was always doing architecture. I had a drafting table as a teenager, and I was excellent at math, and science, and art. And so my dad convinced me that I should, or at least encouraged that I look into the engineering side of it. And so I found architectural engineering. And that was a dream come true. So, I was at the University of Texas, Austin, learning about buildings and hurricanes, and, and tornadoes, Oklahoma, all sorts of different places, and making sure that the structure was, was built for the, the environment. And, but unfortunately, I ended up moving before I could finish that degree. But I've always had a passion. Every time we have a development in Simi Valley, or any place in the community, I'm always out looking to make sure that, you know, something, to me, what I see is important. I, I enjoy planned communities. I like it where, where things are convenient, so that people don't have to be struggling to get to their shops, or even just within their own homes, is making sure that things are, you know, whether or not there's an argument, do you want upstairs laundry or downstairs laundry? I know that that's really not something that the Planning Commission deals with. But when I was on the Neighborhood Council, one of the projects that we were looking at, one of my concerns was whether or not the backyard should be against the railroad tracks. And I was really pleased to see that the Planning Commission asked them to flip it the way that I had actually seen would have been a better design to begin with. So, I was very pleased that the Planning Commission did come through with that.
Okay, great. And do you have the time to dedicate to this position of being Planning Commissioner? Sometimes their meetings go quite a few hours. I know I've sat in quite a few. So, do you have the time and ability to sit in on, on, on the meetings required of you, which, for Planning Commission?
Yes, I, I actually do have the time to do so. I am, I am self-employed, very part-time at this point, due to some health issues that I've had in the past. And so that's where I, I fill in my time, is with volunteer work. And so I know that I, I sit up and watch the City Council meetings. I know that sometimes you guys have gone until like 1:30 in the morning. And of course, sitting at home with COVID, sometimes I fall asleep. But typically, when I was in the City Council meetings before COVID, you guys can go extremely late, and I do my very best to stay, stay in, in those chambers as long as possible. But I do have the time. I don't have anything to get up for in, in the morning that I have to, to, to basically rush off, or, or not being able to pay attention, or not prepare for. I know that that's an extremely dedicated thing, is to be able to research and, and make sure that you're prepared for the meetings. John Castleberry, I know, is always very, very much on top of the research. And, and I'm sorry, I, I don't really know Tim, or Alan, or John, but I do know John. And, and so John always was very dedicated to making sure that, that the research was done. And it's really important, same as when, when I was on Neighborhood Council. I know that it's nowhere near the depth of research that needs to be, be done in comparison to the Planning Commission. But I think it's really important that, you know, if people are going to be coming to our city to, to ask for, for something of us, we should be prepared in making sure that everything is up to speed before we even meet with people.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Those are all the questions I have. Ms. Gray.
And any other council members have questions they want to ask Ms. Gray?
And we both do.
Okay, then we'll start with DeeDee.
So do I, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Ms. Gray. It's good to see you again. I do thank you for your volunteerism within the city. I, I know you've been active with the Cultural Arts Foundation and with the Neighborhood Council. I do apologize, we weren't able to select you last time. There were too many good applicants. But like you indicated, you will be doing it again. So, I'm sure you'll be back on there. If, well, no, hopefully, you'll be a Planning Commissioner instead. I guess I did read your biography, and I just had a question more on a personal level, is why do you want to be a Planning Commissioner here in Simi Valley?
You know, I, it's been 26 years since I've lived here. And, you know, some, some of the developments I, I've been concerned about, I'm really concerned about the growth of Simi Valley. I, I really want to make sure that, from what I understand, it seems like everybody is in agreement that we want to keep our open spaces, open spaces. And, and I feel that there's sometimes a need for the city to grow, and sometimes there's a need for the city not to grow. And I really want to be working with the city and the City Council, that whether or not something is necessary is going to be deter, determined by what our also-city manager is telling us, is that, you know, if we are underdeveloped, and people are having to commute on, on, on our freeways, and putting a strain on our freeways, then we're not doing a service to our community. But at the same time, we certainly don't want to be overgrowing our city, and then putting strain on, on other parts of the city. I believe that Simi Valley has very, very little space left. But I think that we can be extremely smart about what we do with our space, and making sure that the community itself is benefiting and not strained by any development that we do. I think it's really important that we work with the community, as well as the businesses. And, and I think that it's just important that we take all of, everything into consideration, and not just, you know, one or two things. There are so many things that, that needs to be considered. I'm extremely open-minded. Anybody that, people that I've worked with on different projects have always said, I might come in with one perspective, but as soon as somebody explains something differently, I might actually see, you know, I actually see other people's perspectives, and I could easily change my mind if it's a good idea. I don't get stuck in my ways on things. And I, I believe that working with the city, the city manager, the city council, the Neighborhood Councils, even developers, is that we can make this a really great city. Not that we're not already a great city, but for the needs that, that come our way.
Thank you.
Councilmember Listner.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, appreciate your, your willingness and interest in doing this. I have two or three questions. First of all, I want to understand what you see the role of the Planning Commissioner as?
From what I've been explained by, what John Castleberry has, has explained, and when I was on the Neighborhood Council, is that the, the Planning Commissioner is there to ensure that when projects come through, one, they've gone through the proper channels. And then there's, I know that there's also some state regulations that we, recently, I guess, that have, we don't have a say on. And so it's to ensure that we are not putting the city on any sort of strain, putting ourselves in any sort of legal actions, and ensuring that things get approved prior to the City Council, and working with the engineers and everybody within the city to approve projects, so that we can go forward with the, the growth of the city.
Thank you. I just have a question about your, your biography, which we read, which was, was fun to read, and you, you've elaborated certainly in this, in this interview. You talked about the need to keep the small-town feeling, and how much you appreciated that. What does, so how do we keep that small-town feeling through, through, through the Planning Commissioner, or through, through planning? What, how do you keep that?
I, I would like to see, you know, more, maybe some developments where people don't have to be driving. They can actually, like, like, from the, the projects that I've seen so far coming through for the Farmers Building, is that people can come in, they've got places that they can walk to. You know your neighbors, because you're able to be in, in a, in a community that you're not getting your car to go someplace. I would really like to see more developments like that, where, where people can come home from work, park their car, maybe walk down to the, you know, the grocery store, or to a restaurant, or something where they see their neighbors. They're not just driving and parking their car, going in their homes, and you never see anybody. You know, our first development that we lived in, everybody was outside. We had a convenience store down, down the street, so people would walk, walk to convenience stores. If somebody said, I'm, I'm going to the store, can I get you something? Those are the types of small-time feel, small-town feel that I like about Simi Valley. And I think that if we, granted, we don't have that much space, but the, the places that we, spaces that we do have, to be able to integrate those types of, you know, business and housing together in such a way that people can mingle more, instead of just having to drive someplace to mingle.
Thank you. And, and maybe one final question, because I have had a couple people talk about, have reached out to me about your political background. I, I guess my question is, do you see, is this, for you, a nonpartisan position? Is that, how does that play in all of this? Because I know that part of your involvement, you've been very active politically. And so I just want to know how that plays. Is this an opportunity for that? I'm just curious how that feel, how you see that playing into this big picture.
Well, first of all, I, I don't, I don't feel, I don't feel that I'm political. Like, I ran for, for mayor with Ruth Luvenos and Phil Luce back in 2018. I had a great time in the process, but as you see, I did not run again. I'm more, I like to be more involved in helping and doing things, and not actually running for office. That is not what I like to do. I'm not good at politics. At least, I don't think I am. I'm good at doing tasks. Give me a job. I'm good at that job. Let me, let me process that, those, those issues. I don't believe that I am political. I may be affiliated with a political organization, but like I said, I ran once, and I know plan on running again. I just want to be of service to our city. That's why Neighborhood Councils, the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation, I'm better at those projects, Planning Commissioner, things that, things where it's nonpartisan. I don't believe that the City Council's partisan. I believe the City Council is nonpartisan. I believe that the City Council can, can make decisions on a nonpartisan basis. I think I can make decisions on a nonpartisan basis. I don't believe that our city needs to be political. And I don't believe that any of my activities should, should interfere in anything any more than some of the other City Council members that are political.
Thank you.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, thank you, Ms. Gray, for sitting through all these questions. I saw in your bio that we have something in common with the injuries. I feel for you, and I definitely feel your pain. My first question is, real quick, why did you move to Simi Valley?
Uh, let's see. I think we were 25 at the time, and we wanted to buy a home. And so we were, at the time, I'd lived in Camarillo, I'd lived in Ventura, I'd lived in Thousand Oaks. My husband, too, at the time, had been living in Thousand Oaks, and then he moved in Camarillo. I don't think he ever lived in Ventura. And so we wanted someplace to live. We were working both in Westlake. So, it was, we looked at a lot of homes in, in Thousand Oaks, but as a 25-year-old, your choices for homes are very limited. In Simi Valley, we could get more home for the price. There was, there's a There was, there's a much bigger selection and better selection of homes than what we were qualified for in Thousand Oaks. And so we kind of figured, well, it's a 20-minute commute, it's not that bad. I had a boyfriend that lived here for his entire life. We had friends that had lived here in the past, and nobody ever said anything terrible about Simi Valley. The only thing that I remember being a problem was before the 23 freeway merged with the 118, and that you had to go through Madera Road to get to the 118. But then, once that was built, the congestion on Madera Road didn't seem to be so terrible. And so we found that Simi Valley had that quiet feel. Yes, it was farther away than where we worked, if we lived in Thousand Oaks or Westlake. However, for our income level, we liked Simi Valley. We could afford things in Simi Valley. Restaurants weren't as expensive as they were in Simi, or in Thousand Oaks and Westlake. And like I said, we were planning on living in our first home for just like a couple of years, and then move on, and instead stayed. And when it came for us, came for time that we needed to upgrade, we stayed in Simi Valley.
Thank you. You've been obviously watching council meetings for the last year or so, maybe a couple more years than that. How do you feel personally about the way, because, you know, there's a lot of stories going around and everything? How do you feel about the way that Councilmember Lewvenos has been treated?
Is this, is this, excuse me, Mayor, is this related to her position as Planning Commissioner?
I was just curious if there was any, you know, I'm looking for, I'm looking for people to get a feel for Ms. Gray.
I fail to see the relevance in, in her position and qualifications for Planning Commissioner.
I think we see if Ms. Gray wants to answer that question or not, leave it up to her.
Well, I personally have seen, I have seen everybody on the City Council attacked at some point or another. I have seen peaceful protests outside the City Hall before City Council meetings for almost everybody on the City Council. So, you know, I believe in the First Amendment, I believe that people have the right to speak out. I have a concern when things become violent, and when people have death threats, I think that's a problem. And I'm really hoping that, that that's not, you know, those people that live here in Simi Valley, on, on all of our City Council members. I believe that we have First Amendment rights, but, but it, especially this past week, I am a little fearful of all of our City Council members for the next couple of weeks. But that's, you know, that's the news, and I'm really hoping that the people in Simi Valley are, are just going to be doing peaceful protests, and that's about it.
Thank you very much for answering that, I appreciate it. My last question is going to be, somebody was on public comments earlier, and he mentioned something about you being arrested. Would you like to explain that?
I don't know how that has anything to do with my-
Hold on, Councilmember Judge, if I may, this is Lonnie, City Attorney. I did, in 2018, there was a law that passed that said one could not ask about criminal convictions or arrests prior to a conditional employment offer being made. So there's a new California law, so I apologize if everybody's not up on this. So my best, and I confess I don't have-
I kind of considered it, you know, just, you know, I don't want to say a smear, but I just wanted to give her a chance. It's fine, I understand Lonnie. I'll retract it.
Yeah, there might be a way to get there, but if the council-
He said he'd retract it, so let's leave it at that.
All right.
Thank you very much for answering my questions.
My pleasure.
Okay, myself. First of all, I think it's more of a statement to you, Ms. Gray, is when you mentioned the interview for the Neighborhood Council, and I'm here to say that that interview went fine. There was absolutely no reason other than, there has to be a reason, right? But what we had decided to do before we even knew who the applicants were was go by the recommendations of the staff, which was to try putting new people in those positions when, and not giving them to people that have already served. And that was the absolute only reason that you were not appointed, is that because you had previously served, and we had several that had never served. So that's no reflection on how the interview went at all. And I want you and anybody listening to know that. And I have no questions. I, I, granted, the interview for the Neighborhood Council was quite short, but it gave me plenty of information, and your, your earlier one over, basically your bio, simply speaks for itself, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if there are no further questions, I move to nominate all four, I move to appoint all four Planning Commissioners that have been, as per staff recommendation, in the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay, I just want to verify, is that, do we need two motions since we broke it up into the interview process into two sections? Or is one motion good for all?
You're, you're fine with this one motion.
Okay, one motion for all four. Okay, very good, thank you. We have a motion and second call for the vote.
Please vote yes for me. I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries. So I just want, you can go first from now on, I'll wait till you finish. Please vote yes for me.
Vote yes for me, too, please. Sorry, Councilmember Judge.
No worries.
The motion passes unanimously.
So congratulations to each of you, and to you, Ms. Gray. And I wish you were here to get that really high-dollar volunteer pin, because I know the stipend makes you a quality volunteer. Thank you very much, and thank you for going-
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, if I can say something?
Sure.
Councilmember Lewvenos, I want to thank you very much for giving us John Castleberry. Not only was he really good as a councilman, as a Planning Commissioner, he's an overall great guy. I really enjoy-
Okay, what do you want, Lonnie? You can talk without that mic.
Oh, there we go. Ms. Gray, look for-
Okay, okay.
I look forward to working with you. There we go. Okay. Thank you all, and thank you to the council for appointing. I'm sure all of us feel the same way. We really enjoy our time on the commission. Look forward to two more years, or four, depending on who you are.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I have to officially appoint all four of you. So with the wave of the hands, you are officially appointed to the Simi Valley Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just noticed that we have all of the other Planning Commissioners here. I wondered if they wanted to have an opportunity to say anything briefly. Would you like that or not, Mayor? Or not, it's fine.
Okay, you want to stay up till midnight, or what?
No, I just-
Okay. John Tolson, speak.
Welcome aboard, Ms. Gray. Thank you very much. Thank you, member of the council.
Okay, Alan Mann, go ahead, sir.
As the Chair of the Planning Commission, welcome. And your first meeting will see you on the 20th. And don't forget to bring donuts and coffee, because that's kind of what the new person needs to bring.
Diet.
I recall Mr. Mann brought his mother and his mother's camera to his first meeting, so you can do that if you'd like as well.
Yes.
Okay, has everybody had their piece?
We're done, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. Back to your meeting.
Great, thank you, sir. On to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is Item 3A2, Selection of City Council Members to Interview and Nominate Perspective Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members. And Emily Habib is here for this presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the City Council. Neighborhood Council Executive Board members are appointed to alternating two-year terms with approximately one-third of the seats expiring every eight months. The next term of appointments is scheduled to commence on March 1st, 2021. A general recruitment to fill 17 positions was initiated on November 6, 2020, 16th, 2020, and concluded on December 11th, 2020. The city received a total of 70 applications, 20 for Neighborhood Council 1, 14 for Neighborhood Council 2, 12 for Neighborhood Council 3, and 24 for Neighborhood Council 4. In previous recruitment cycles, the City Council has typically selected two subcommittees, each consisting of two City Council members. Staff is recommending that the City Council select two subcommittees, each comprised of two City Council members, to interview and nominate prospective Neighborhood Council Executive Board members. This concludes staff's report, and staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's start out by, I'll just go down-
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, I'd like to serve on the board for Neighborhood Council 2 and 4.
Okay, would you write that down? Okay. Elaine, would you like to serve?
I would, would, yes, I would very much like to serve, but happy to be serving wherever you want to assign me.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Lewvenos, would you like to serve?
Yes, I would like to serve, and I will serve wherever you assign me as well.
Okay, thank you. DeeDee Kavanaugh?
Yes, I will, too, and I did one last time, so I, anything other than one, I think, would be fair.
Okay, and that is the four, so do you want to make me an alternate? If somebody's sick or something, I'd be happy-
Certainly.
So we'll do it that way, if that's okay? Do we need a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint myself and Councilmember Cav- or Mayor Potomac Kavanaugh to be the City Council members for Neighborhood Councils 1, or, excuse me, 2 and 4. And that Councilmember Lewvenos and Councilmember Lister be appointed to be the liaison or the interviewers for Neighborhood Councils 1 and 3.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Please vote yes for me.
And vote yes for me also.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, that worked out very nicely.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is Item 3A3, Appointment of City Council Board Members to Representation on Boards, Commissions, and Committees. And City Manager Gable will present this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we are returning with this item from the December 14th meeting, where it was continued for further discussion. At the 14th, December 14th meeting, it was requested that the City Council members have an opportunity to review each one of the committees as are formulated, and provide some input on any changes that they would like in terms of relinquishing a committee assignment that they currently have, or indicating what assignment they would like to receive. That information is now on Page 2 of staff's report, and is available for you to review. Beginning on Page 4 is the list of the different boards, committees, and commissions. Then on Page 7 is the document that we had forwarded to you with a little brief description of each one of the boards, commissions, and committees. That concludes my report, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, staff?
I don't, I don't know if I have a question, but just a comment about the report, if that's all right, Mayor? I was going to say that if you, on Page 2, as was referenced by Mr. Gable, it says where we would be willing or like to serve. I just want to make it clear that, that actually, I'm quite happy with my assignments I currently have, and certainly don't need people to move off of those three that I mentioned. So for instance, I notice it says, I know that you are the representative to the Simi Valley Tourism Alliance right now. I'm not trying to displace in any way, if you're happy there, but just willing to serve there if you wanted a break. So I guess I just wanted to clarify that that was my, the nature of my response.
Okay, thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
It's kind of in par with what Councilmember Litzter just said. I was fine with any changes, but I do notice that Councilmember Litzter would like to be on the Simi Valley Community Task Force on Heroin Prevention, and I'll be happy to relinquish that and let you sit on that.
Thank you, if you're all right with that, I just-
I'm perfectly, perfectly fine, yes.
Great.
I just want to stay on the Armed Services banner, because my nephew's in the Army.
Totally fine, totally fine. Like I said, I don't need to make any changes, but I do have friends that have been affected by heroin, so would very much be happy to serve there.
Mr. Mayor, I'm very happy staying on the committees I'm assigned.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask if anyone would like to sit unwilling to relinquish. I know it's on the report. My ADA Transit Advisory Committee wanted to know if anyone, including Councilwoman Litzter, would like to serve in that capacity?
I would like to know if you would like to switch with me. I'll go to the ADA Transit Authority, or Advisory Committee, and you'd go to the SCAG voting rep.
Oh, that would be wonderful, Mayor. I greatly appreciate that.
Okay, you got that?
I do, what we can do is just flip the SCAG voting representative. We can make you the alternate if you'd like, and Councilmember Lewvenos as the voting member.
Okay, is that good with you, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
And I wanted to say something. I believe that Councilmember Judge was willing to relinquish his participation in the Youth Council. I think he did so just in response, because the last time, I believe, Councilmember Lewvenos had said that he had a large number of assignments. I just wanted to say, say to Councilmember Judge that I appreciated his willingness. I know that he served there for 10 years wonderfully, and has done some great things with the youth, and even had his own son participate anyway, so I, I mean, it's, I appreciate his willingness to do that. I don't think it's necessary, I guess, is what I'm saying, unless he desires to have a change, in which case I would step in, would be happy to serve there, but I-
I would be more than happy to let you serve on the Youth Council. I did serve on the Youth Council for 10 years. Two of my children went through the Youth Council.
That's right.
I'm always amazed by the achievements of our Youth Council, and I still am today. They're doing great things, but I'm more than happy to allow you to do that, because it is a very fulfilling council appointment.
So the, I think usually whenever Councilmember Judge says something, he means it.
Okay, okay. Well, then, thank you, Councilmember Judge.
That's how I take it.
Okay, very good.
Consider that.
Then thank you. I would, I would enjoy that assignment. I appreciate that.
Okay, I think that's it. Next item.
Do we need a motion, Mayor?
Okay, yes, please.
I move to appoint City Council members, as amended right now during this meeting, to Boards, Commissions, and Committees as discussed by the City Council.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, call for the vote.
Please vote yes for me.
And vote yes for me, too.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is 3B1, Presentation on State of California Office of Traffic Safety for Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grant. And I believe Chief Livingstone and Commander Meyer are here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the City Council, my name is Commander Tom Meyer, and I, can you hear me?
Yes.
And I supervise the Traffic Bureau, and one of my duties there is to draft and submit for a grant through the Office of Traffic Safety. And so I was asked to give an overview of the program, and it is the grant that you both reviewed and accepted last November.
Yeah, they're all on, yeah, they're all on.
You can hear me?
I just turned it on.
And this mask is a little thick, so. Okay, so what is the OTS? The mission of it is to effectively administer traffic safety grants that deliver innovative programs and eliminate traffic fatalities and injuries on California roadways. It was established fifty years ago. Administers grant funding provided by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, which is NHTSA, with the specific goal to reduce serious injuries and fatalities on all California roads. Funds approximately ninety million in the form of more than three hundred grants to public safety agencies across the state. The Simi Valley Police Department has participated in this program since 2012 into 2013, so quite a number of years. OTS is a department under the California State Transportation Agency that includes other departments such as Caltrans, DMV, and the California Highway Patrol. These are some of the funding authorities, National Highway Safety Act, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, California State Transportation Agency. The eligible entities are obviously the county, state, and local governments, law enforcement agencies, judicial agencies, fire departments, and public health departments, nonprofit, community-based organizations with the governmental host agencies. Okay, so what are our OTS program areas? We're focused primarily on alcohol. The primary categories are alcohol impaired driving, distracted driving, which is cell phone use, drug impaired driving, county record systems. And that refers to, we use a program called Crossroads, is what we document our collision reports on. And the county, as a whole, received a grant, I think a couple of years ago, for about $400,000. So all the agencies in Ventura County are all on the same platform. They can research our collisions and areas and statistics, and we can do the same through them. Motorcycle safety, occupant protection, seat belts, pedestrian and bicycle safety, traffic records are obviously our own records. OTS requirements from OTS. OTS grants are only for specifically identified traffic safety-related activities. Whatever detail we are working that day, it's the only detail we can work. If there's a call for service, we're not supposed to really respond to those. If we do, we stop the clock on the, on the OTS detail, because all those hours, they get audited by the state. So we don't respond to any other police services, other than the detail that we're assigned to. OTS grants require specific performance of enforcement activities during peak times. For instance, one of the categories is DUI saturation patrol. That OTS will dictate that time from eight o'clock at night till, actually, seven o'clock at night till three in the morning. And that is to look, those are the peak times for drunk drivers. So they dictate those times, and those are the hours that we will work those. OTS grants are designed to be supplemental enforcement activities and are to be staffed on overtime. We don't do any of those things on, on regular time, because the state reimburses the city the overtime. And that goes from officer all the way up to commander. We can participate in those, those overtime details. So on grant requirements from OTS, you can see, I actually had a handout, but it doesn't look like it got disseminated to you guys. The amounts to be for specific enforcement details and materials, that is an example from the grant, and they will articulate the monies assigned for each category. If you can see, like, the first one is DUI checkpoints. They give us $40,000 for that, forty thousand four hundred. In my copy, they'll tell me I'll have four details to work, and I just have to reverse engineer it and figure out how many personnel I can assign for one of those details to meet the threshold of all those categories right there. It's super regulated. If we don't use those allocated funds, then it can cause disquali- disqualification for future grant applications. So I threw this slide in, it's, one of the categories is checkpoints, obviously, and there's some misinformation. People think that we arbitrarily pick locations throughout the city. And for the most part, there's some guidelines involved. Site selection must be made by the supervisor, we apply a neutral formula, so it's not really by the discretion of the officer. Safety for the staff and public include adequate lighting, warning signs, and vehicle traffic routing. Some of the locations we pick do, the safety comes into the proper, obviously, the proper signage, but an area where we can pull vehicles off a line into a parking lot and evaluate drivers and whatnot. Reasonable location, time and duration designed to minimize intrusiveness to traffic and maximize effectiveness of enforcement. High visibility and advanced warning for the official nature of the roadblock. We have to provide signs allowing the drivers to have the ability not to go through the checkpoint. I follow social media pretty, pretty closely, and that's always the question, is why do you let the people know that we have a DUI checkpoint ahead, coming up? And, and the truth is, that case law dictates where and how we, we have those types of checkpoints. And obviously, length of detention may not be longer than needed to determine impairment or obscure, or obtain documents to verify license, registration, and insurance status. And then, advance publicly should be made in local paper and social media for the event. We get those a lot, you'll see those NICSAL alerts, and those are often by, we get the templates from actually OTS. They, they provide the verbiage for those social media platforms. So how does the OTS benefit the community? It increases the police presence, there's no cost to the city, education of the public, safer streets, saving lives based on the enforcement and the education that we provide. And it also provides equipment purchased. They purchase our equipment, our LiDARS, radars, our DUI trailer cones, traffic control signs. That is all purchased through OTS funds, the city pays nothing on that. SVBD priorities and traffic safety programs. Our whole goal is to reduce collisions via high-visibility enforcement activities. Just a few statistics, January 2017 to November 2020, we had, we experienced nineteen fatalities, and sixteen hundred and thirteen people were injured. We made a thousand forty-five DUI arrests. Collision and DUI arrest data drives our grant process and enables the city to receive funds to help increase patrol of, to reduce collisions. Because the last two years, we had suffered a pretty good increase in fatalities, we actually, our grant funds, actually, we got more from OTS. Simi Valley Police Department provides education and raises public awareness. And we do that through classroom education and students on pedestrian and bicycle safety. Again, we do this through NICSAL, Facebook, and other social media platforms through our OTS templates. The program provides training, and it provides update and improved officer training related to alcohol and drug recognition. The whole program, again, is, is provided by the state, it's no cost to the city, and it's hugely beneficial to our community, and all of us live here. That's the end of my presentation, happy to answer any of your questions.
Click my button, any questions of?
I have, I have one quick question, please.
Sure.
Commander, if you'll go back a page, I think it's one page. It was regarding, a little bit more, another page, a little more detail in the selection of the location, and it had something to do with using data that we currently have regarding collisions and all that. Can you just give a little bit better, or more detail on that? I know that was a question before.
Yes, the, the traffic unit, we approve all the collision reports, so we know where the, the intersections and location that we're having the most issues with relating to collisions and, and other factors, DUIs, fatalities, we factor all those things in, and amount of traffic. We really try to be, again, and it really is, and just so the City Council understands, and the community understands, it's not about just arresting DUI drivers, it's about education. That's really what this program is about. Actually, if we were to arrest a lot of DUI drivers, OTS would consider that a failure, because they want us to educate the public, and they should be using Uber and all those things. And in those checkpoints, we hand out flyers, both in English and Spanish, trying to really get across that message. We're in a small city, so locations vary, obviously. The West End is a lot busier, we tend to migrate more toward the West End, but those are some of the considerations when we choose a location.
Thank you.
Do you see this as a potential for, in the future, a, one of the quarterly, what do you call them, a community forum? Or maybe I should say, I see it as, because we get a lot of questions, not a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, but we do get questions on, especially the DUI checkpoints, and some questions regarding, is it targeted against a certain model of car, or whatever? And I think you explain in here, it's very neutral, and I think that's probably some good information to go out. So just throw that out there to think of in the future, if you have a, a time where you're going, okay, what's going to be the next subject? That, that may be a good one, because I find this very interesting.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Yeah, and I think that a lot of, some of the information, like even our fatalities, you know, that, they're significant. And I don't think people realize, I mean, they see the traffic, but I don't think they realize the amount of injury collisions we actually suffer, along with the fatalities. It's a little on the alarming side.
Right, yes, Elaine.
Just, just several questions, Commander, I appreciate your time. I think in one of your first slides, you mentioned that when these activities are participating, it has to be done basically on overtime, that it's not done during normal scheduled work hours, is that accurate?
Correct.
And so, and you're saying that the grant then pays the differential in the overtime pay, I assume? Or, I mean, the grant, is that correct? Is that how that works?
So what they do is.
Pays the whole thing, correct?
They pay everything, they give us a certain amount, and then I gotta kind of.
Gotcha.
Rough figures on what an overtime rate would be for the average officer.
And then, and then do you make it optional to officers to participate, or how is that a selection process?
For our contract agreement, we do have to post it, it has to be open for everybody.
Gotcha.
I mean, some, some, you know, our traffic unit, obviously, is, is a lot more probably effective than patrol, but our MOU calls for it to open it up to anybody who's willing to participate in that detail.
And so you mentioned, and then you answered the question, my question was going to be, how is the, how does the data drive this grant? What I heard you say is that as, as you report more fatalities or more accidents, et cetera, then potentially, the grant money is larger, is that accurate?
It increases, correct. When we first started this program, I think our first grant, we received about thirty thousand.
Oh, interesting.
Last year, I believe, we received a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and the year before, that was like one oh two. But because we had this increase in injury collisions and fatalities and DUI collisions, that got increased. I could tell you that a city like Oxnard, one or two years ago, their grant was four hundred thousand, but they have a, they have a.
Larger population, larger problem.
Yeah, they have some problems there.
And if I could just ask one more question, which may, is not necessarily related to the report, and this is a question that I had at last, a couple nights ago. If, if someone sees an impaired driver on the road, on the freeway or wherever, and they see, or what they suspect is an impaired driver, what is the proper protocol? Are they to dial 911 and say, I've got this, or, or just stay clear, and just be grateful? I mean, what is, is there a proper response?
Absolutely, yeah, if they, if they feel, it's that they're, you know, driving impaired, and they're all over the road, you certainly call 911, that's the fastest way to dispatch. And if they're on the freeway, it'll automatically go to, to CHP, so they can have the proper, or, or will transfer more to CHP, and our officers, and they'll, they'll call it out, they'll put it out on the radio, and then closer the units are, and they'll try to coordinate that. As far as the witness, yeah, I mean, stay back and just monitor, don't get involved, follow, you know, as long as you can, or as feasible for you, but as long as you've reported it, the information's, again, almost put out instantaneously to the officers. And we do everything we can to catch up to that impaired driver. I know when I was in patrol, and that, you know, and sometimes that, that witness would, would leave, and I always made it a, I always made it our priority to call that witness back, to let him know that, thank you for pulling, getting this drunk driver off the roadway by calling in. You know, it's just to kind of encourage that type of, you know, response, and being a little active about that.
Thank you, appreciate that information, thank you.
I have one more question.
When you're done, Mayor, if I can ask some questions.
Okay.
And then I'd like to ask some just one.
Okay, you guys have got a, we're gonna have to send you these pads that say, Request to Speak. Not really, not really. Somewhere in your report, it mentioned car seat. And there was car seat safety, and there was classes, I think, put on at one time, I don't know if they still are or not. Can you say where we are on the car seat thing for small children that need car seats, and parents that need instruction on how to, to load them?
The Traffic Bureau, we haven't been really too involved in that, because they're, and you probably see it in the, in the overflow parking lot. And I think the county administers that, there's that van, and I forgot the name that's on that. Safe Kids, and there, every Wednesday, from a certain amount of time, you can bring your car there, and they will do the inspection for your car, and sometimes they'll even provide a car seat. So we routinely, actually, that was in one of my NICSAL alerts last year, was to coordinate with that program. And we listed the address, or not the address, but the contact name and the phone number, so they can.
Okay, you answered my real question, is it still in existence?
It is, yeah, that van's still there.
It's been a little while since we had young kids.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Yes, I have a few questions. But you mentioned the neutral formula that I'm seeing on the screen that's on display right now. Can you describe what that neutral formula is?
The, we don't have, when we choose our location, we don't have any agenda other than the, where we, an area that we routinely, I mean, suffer collisions. So the data supports that. We, we don't target bars, we don't, we don't do any of that kind of stuff. So it's primarily the statistics backup where we choose. And it's the supervisors that choose the location, the officer does not.
Are, are they moved around? You mentioned that you usually do a lot of stops on the West Side. You know, I'm concerned about, you know, there being a self-fulfilling prophecy, you know, I'm a, I'm a. know, I'm a, I'm a major in criminal justice, I have a law degree and, you know, unfortunately in a lot of low income, majority minority communities, because there is a, you know, a lot of law enforcement presence, there tend to be, you know, higher, you know, higher crimes reported, but that's not necessarily because there are more crimes being committed. It's just that there's a larger law enforcement presence. And so I'm wondering if you did that, you know, if you had more neutral stops around different areas of the city, if you would, you know, find that that's, that that's more equitable, shall we say? If you, if you did more stops on the east side of Simi Valley, maybe you would, you know, maybe that would cater, you know, make it more neutral in terms of not being, if you're, if you're always patrolling on the west side of Simi Valley, then you're always going to catch people on the west side of Simi Valley, but if you never patrol on the east side, then there's never going to be any statistics to justify having enforcement on the east side of Simi Valley. Do you understand what I'm saying?
For the most part, yes. And I understand your, I think I understand your question. So we, there are some factors. We, and we've done the entry point to Simi Valley because you get a high level of traffic. So we, we get the most out of the enforcement, but the most, most out of the, of the education side of it too. So we've done a checkpoint on Madera at Wood Ranch Parkway, you know, the entrance to Simi Valley. We have done Madera and Royal, I'm sorry, Madera and Strathern, First, First Street and the Tracks, Arringer. Sycamore's a little difficult because we don't really have a good location, a safe place to evaluate people. We, we use LA Avenue, Bridget in LA, we use Royal Avenue. Our last fatal was at the S turn on LA Avenue in Angus. So we've worked out a few times. I've had some checkpoints. And in an average, in an average night, we'll get maybe seven or 800 people come through that. We did have one checkpoint on Taplo Street to get further east and we had 100 people come through in an eight hour period. Not a lot of impact, not a lot of education going on in that. So we choose areas and unfortunately the West End seems to have more traffic and that's why we pick, we seem to go more toward the, toward the West End.
Is that because there's more dense housing on the West End of Simi Valley?
No, I don't think it has to do, it just, it has to do with the road most traveled. That's why we, again, we pick LA Avenue at Bridget. I would say that's just a major thoroughfare. Angus, I'm sorry, Angus in LA is just a thoroughfare to the east end of town and vice versa from the east going to the west.
Okay. So you, the neutral formula is based on how many people go through that area and how many people are you able to educate because that's the foundation for the amount of money you get for the grant? Is that correct?
No.
Okay. Then can you walk me through the neutral formula?
It is, again, it is based on what we as a supervisors feel is, has the most impact. That I would consider that neutral. We don't staff a DUI checkpoint in a, as you described, as a highly, like a dense area. We wouldn't do that. We wouldn't target bars or anything like that. So it's, it's just where we get the most effect, education and the most, again, to be able to educate the, the drivers.
Okay. I will ask the police chief if maybe he can provide some criteria for the neutral formula. I'm a teacher, so I'm used to checklists and rubrics and, you know, if, if there's a formula, then I usually, you know, tell my students what that formula is or what the components of that formula are. My, my next question is, are there, are these advanced notices? It's on the same, the last bullet point on this slide that you have, that's displaying right now. Are these advanced publicity notices, are they given in English and Spanish or just in English? Or Tagalog or Arabic or any other language or are they just in English?
Primarily in English.
Although we do press releases on these that are done in Spanish as well.
Are they consistently done in Spanish or just some?
The, the press releases are done in Spanish as well as the social media blasts that we, we do.
Okay, but these, these advanced notices are in English and in Spanish?
They are in English and in Spanish on social media and through our press releases.
Okay. And is that through the city or through the police department?
The, the city will do that. We will do it through our, through our offices, social media, as well as when we put out a press release.
Okay, and through Nixle as well or no?
I don't know about Nixle.
It's on social media, but Nixle is linked to social media, so they go out on both.
Okay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Louvenos, Chief Livingston, I can, I can answer the question in terms of the formula. It's, it's, it's data driven, so we're not, we don't arbitrarily just pick areas and set up checkpoints. We do it based on data in terms of amount of traffic, the collision reports that we get. We, you know, we have intersections that are problematic intersections, no different than when somebody is to call up and complain about something where there's a high amount of traffic. We direct our resources that, that's based on data. So that's how the formula works. It's not, it's not something done arbitrarily to say, well, you know, we're going to have this many cars, so we don't want to waste our time over here. It's based on data. And so like the checkpoints that we've had in the east end, like Commander Meyer was referring to Angus in LA, that, that's, you know, close to Stern Street. So we do, we do put them in those areas, but it's driven by data. And that's, that's what the grant requires us to do. We can't arbitrarily decide just to put them in different areas. So that's, that's what we mean by a formula. There's no mathematical, I guess, if we have this, then we do that. It's just based on the data on traffic collisions.
Okay, and do you, do you adjust, thank you, Chief, for that, answering that question. Do you adjust the data or have you, you know, Commander mentioned that the first time you got this grant was 30,000, now you're getting 122,000. Obviously there's a greater need and, you know, our population obviously is growing in the city of Simi Valley. I know, you know, even though we have a small town feel, we do have 127,000 people living in this city. So have your, has the criteria adjusted to the growing population in the city?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's pretty much what's driving it because, you know, with our increase in traffic and our increase in population, we do experience, we experience more accidents and it's just exponential in that way. So, so we do take that into consideration, but in the, you know, in the end, it has to be justified on the data.
Okay, I have two more questions and thank you for indulging me. How do you measure safer streets and saving lives? I saw that in one of the slides, that the outcome is safer streets and saving lives, but that just seems really vague. So I would have liked some hard data or numbers there, like, you know, we had fewer per capita accidents or fewer per capita deaths or how do you measure safer streets and saving lives?
Yeah, we do that through statistics. It is, it is the reporting and we do, we've had slight decreases in the amount of collisions. It just depends on what we, what year we're looking at. For instance, just to give you a quick example. So in 2019, unfortunately, we had 325 injury collisions and victims were 463. In 2018, we had 323 and then we had 442 victims. So obviously from 18 to 19 has an increase. And we actually use those numbers, actually OTS uses those numbers for the last three years in determining the amount of money that we are seeking to award us for the grant. We, and, and through the whole year, we are submitting quarterly reports, so they're constantly getting fed our statistics. Relating to safer streets, you can demonstrate that through our statistics, but again, we're providing that education and that presence on the street and people see that enforcement. It's, it's, it's well known that when you have a large presence of police and people notice people getting stopped and getting citations, that people tend to slow down. And that's one of the main collision factors that we're, we experiences from speed and that kind of thing. So people tend to behave when they see more enforcement. And by obviously slowing down and behaving more and abiding by the rules of the roadway, that clearly translates into saving lives.
Was there, is there, along those lines, thank you so much, Commander, is there, is there any way to track, you know, we have had more PSPS events here than anywhere else and we have, in the recent PSPS events, actually had collisions. So is there any way to ensure that we can have traffic enforcement during PSPS events and just have a presence at least? Like you said, Commander, you know, when there is a police presence, people tend to behave and follow the rules. And so I would like to know if any part of this grant can be used for that or if, at least, at the very least, we can track the data of collisions so to make sure that this grant money, if it can't be used for safety during PSPS outages, that we at least have the data to know that there's overlapping or interceding factors in terms of having outages when collisions happen?
That, we clearly track our collisions involving the blackouts. We certainly do that. And as far as the grant itself, there's no category for blackouts. This money is specifically assigned to these different details that I went over on that, on that, that slide. The, obviously most, most planned outages are, it's very rare that they're planned. I think Edison is probably working on that a little bit more. I've seen more planned outages this year, but it's hard to coordinate both a detail and a blackout, especially because you have to post it on an overtime, a way ahead on a overtime board and people have to sign up and adjust schedules. It's very hard to marry those two.
Okay, thank you so much. Here's my last question. I saw that 40,000 of, 40,000 of the $77,000 grant was for DUI checkpoints and $26,000 is for DUI saturation patrol. So that's 66,000 out of $77,000. That, that means 86% of the budget is being used for DUIs. Are 86% of the collisions and injuries caused by DUIs?
Our, our statistics for last year was about 25%.
So why are we spending 86% of this budget for DUIs if only 25% of the collisions and injuries are caused by DUIs?
Absolutely understand the question. That is what OTS decides. I could tell you last year, I asked for three DUI checkpoints and they gave me four. They want to see four a year. And they have two, one during the winter, they call it a winter campaign, and that is right around the holidays. We have another one in the summer, it's a two week window, and then they want us to have two additional checkpoints. I asked for three again, they gave me four. They're the ones who are, assign those types of monies to whatever program. Again, they're, and I don't know what formula they have, but we provide statistics every quarter to them and they're constantly evaluating that. And that's how they, I'm not sure how they assign those numbers, but we're not asking for those, those amounts.
Okay. Okay, so that, they're, they're, OTS is the one that's saying 86% of your budget has to go to DUIs?
Correct.
Or that's, that's how it pans out, I'm assuming, for those four DUI checkpoints to fund those?
Correct.
Okay. Last question, this is my last one. Do we have any statistics on, on, on the arrests or detainees at all? Like age, background, any of that, gender?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I can't understand the first part of the question.
Demographic information on people detained with DUIs, yes.
I do not have that.
Can, can, can we get a report eventually to, to us, to the city council members? Is that possible?
We can provide that. We would just get it through records, but yeah, anybody who's arrested, we keep data, you know, we have data on the, on the demographics.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for specific names. I just like demographic breakdown of who is being, you know, detained and arrested and things like that.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you very much. I assume that's Chief?
Yes.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, Commander. That was a very comprehensive report and very impressive statistics. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Next item?
Mr. Mayor, there are no items this evening under informational reports. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are no items this evening under item four, public hearings. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item five, public statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. All persons who registered by 3:30 PM today will be called on to speak during the public statements, item five, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin the Zoom public statements.
Yes, we're ready to begin with the first, well, let me look at the time. We'll take a 10 minute break first and then we'll start the public statements.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. And we're going to move forward with the public statements.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the first member of the public to speak is Ms. Tracy Cook. Ms. Cook, please unmute yourself. Ms. Cook, please unmute yourself.
I am unmuted.
There you go. Go ahead, please.
Thank you all for your service to our community during this difficult time. My name is Tracy Cook, I have three undergraduate degrees in kinesiology, education in child development, and a master's of business administration. I'm here today as a lifelong resident concerned about what I'm seeing happen to the citizens of Simi Valley. Throughout our nation, the policy made to control COVID-19 has been ravaging every part of humanity, from financial and mental stability down to the very family relationships we depend on. The World Health Organization defines health and wellness as, quote, "a state of complete physical, mental, and social well-being, and not merely the absence of disease or infirmity", end quote. Plainly, the absence of disease is not a measurement of health, that is, health is multi-dimensional. In fact, Northwestern University states that there are eight dimensions of health, including emotional, spiritual, intellectual, physical, environmental, financial, occupational, and social. When these eight dimensions are not equally considered, wellness is compromised and leads people to suffering from trauma, unhelpful thinking styles, chronic illness, disability, and substance abuse. Let's observe the COVID-19 protocols on California and the city of Simi Valley. Certain businesses must close. This interferes with four dimensions of health, including financial, occupational, emotional, and social. A study done in the Lancet Journal, volume 389, shows that mandatory masks and covering of people's faces, causing deprivation of children to see faces, leads, quote, "to detrimental effects on individuals' behavioral, social, developmental, in terms of symptoms of autism-spectrum disorder, disinhibited social engagement, and inattention over activity throughout young adulthood", end quote. Mandatory masks inhibit emotional, intellectual, and social dimensions of health. Church is closing. This interferes with the spiritual facet of health, as for many religions, fellowship in person is a major component of faith. As you can see, all eight dimensions of health have been affected by the COVID-19 regulations. So what happens when almost all facets of dimensions of health are disrupted with government regulation? An article on ABC News by author Mike Levine writes that, quote, "Calls to U.S. helpline jump eight-hundred-and-ninety-one percent. A warning of a mental health crisis", end quote. Personally, since March, I've lost two friends and one family member. One to a heart attack and two to suicide. Not one to COVID. The city of Simi Valley City Council mission statement is to deliver excellent service to our community by providing a safe and healthy living environment.
Excuse me.
My question here today is, aren't you fulfilling the city of Simi Valley's mission statement by providing a healthy living environment? I urge you to act in accordance with your mission statement by putting forward a motion to declare all business as essential and lifting all COVID-19 mandates on Simi Valley, so that we can live our lives to our full potential in order to align with the true definition of health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Albaran? Rebecca, please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca, and I decline to state my place of residence. I am speaking tonight on a few things, so the first that I want to speak on was something that was addressed at the last council meeting, which was, once again, you know, not appointing council member Ruth Luavinos as the mayor pro temp. There were no valid reasons given for not appointing her, so that's two times that she has not been appointed. And instead, we, we went with the selection from Mike Judge. And, and he was the mayor pro temp, and he had a really tumultuous year. A lot of racist posts, non-stop, you know, inappropriate posts, and, and I thought that I just, I just wanted to go back and, and highlight the fact that, um, that one of the reasons why one of the council members cited, you know, not appointing Luavinos as mayor pro temp was, was because she was bad-mouthing the city, and, you know, she was going and talking about racism. And I think it's interesting, given so many things that have happened in this city, that we're afraid to talk about racism, that even bringing it up, you know, is, is not discussing it. And I just want to highlight one thing that happened, which was Soho Karen, that was arrested here in Ventura County, and she was, you know, she's a Simi Val, she was a Simi Valley resident. And it was interesting that the reactions of people when they found out she was from Simi Valley were to affirm the racism and the racist experiences that many people have had. So I think it's just interesting how people in positions of leadership continuously try to silence people who say, "I've experienced racism," or, you know, "there is racism in Simi Valley." And instead of trying to, you know, open that for discussion, and really trying to see what can be done about racism in this city, they, they use that as a tool, they weaponize it against a person of color on the dais, so I just wanted to highlight that. And I'll just speak until I run out of time. One other thing I wanted to get an update on was regarding the Safe Park, which was supposed to start, I believe, in December. I don't believe it has started, so I would like an update on that. Additionally, I would like to know how much funding we have in regards to our, I think we had like a grant or something.
I'd have to ask you to wrap it up, Mrs.
Okay, I'll make it really quick. My last request would be for us to use housing funds that we have to pay rent for individuals that are currently homeless in this city.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Joe Pachowski? Mr. Pachowski, please unmute yourself. Mr. Pachowski, is that you?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the council. I just wanted to take a, take a few moments to congratulate our new mayor pro temp on her selection at the last council meeting. I think the selection of DeeDee Kavanaugh as mayor pro temp for the next year is fantastic, and I'm sure she's going to do an amazing job as she did the last time she was mayor pro temp. So congratulations, DeeDee, and, and thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Selick, please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Hi, okay, my name is Caitlin, and I am calling in support of council member Ruth Luavinos, because for the second time, her turn of mayor pro temp has been skipped. That is not okay. This isn't a game of Uno. You can't just skip a turn. And that is actually textbook oppression, and it's a disgrace. And I'm calling to ask you to honor the rotation cycle and to appoint council member Ruth Luavinos the position as mayor pro temp. I'd also like to add that she's not bad-mouthing the city, she's actually holding people accountable because we, and I mean, we, I mean, white people, we can be doing better. And doing better starts by giving the appointment to council member Luavinos. So, thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Lance?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay, hello. My name is Suzanne. Thank you guys for having me. First of all, I just wanted to say briefly that everything Tracy said earlier, I think she was the first caller, was absolute nonsense and honestly dangerous to this community. Next, I wanted to urge you to reconsider your choice to not appoint Ruth Luvenos as mayor pro tem, as she is one of, if not the most qualified person on the dais currently. I think it's despicably deplorable and disappointing that in a previous meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, some of the reasons that Rebecca said earlier as well that were given to deny her the spot were that she made some kind of HR report and was bad-mouthing the city. First of all, I wanted to address the HR report. Isn't that exactly what HR is for, to protect people? So the fact that you, Mashburn, even addressed that as a reason to not appoint her sounds like the definition of retaliation to me. Do we really want people to be afraid of reporting things to HR? That's not the kind of work culture I would ever want for anyone. Another reason you said was that she bad-mouthed the city and points out blatant racism that exists. How is that a bad thing if you're pointing out blatant racism? Is addressing actual concerns and marginalized, about marginalized communities something that we don't want from our city council? Do we want people just to stay quiet over something that is an actual genuine concern for a large portion of the city? All that I'm asking is that you try to think objectively about this appointment and consider Ruth's exceptional background in public service and stellar qualifications. Please do not be childish and block this wonderful individual from the position she so rightfully deserves because you know she deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy Niles?
Hi there. My name is Billy Niles, resident of Simi Valley. I would like to support an effort to petition the council to redo the mayor pro tem vote and appoint council member Ruth Luvenos to the position. The council's continued decision to bypass the rotation cycle so as to skip over council member Luvenos for a second time is disgraceful. It's a blatant flouting of established practice that seems meant to punish and penalize a council member who often sits in minority dissent on issues that come across the dais. Council member Luvenos is no less qualified than anyone else, unless you forget was voted into her position just like the rest of you. Did those votes not matter or come with hidden conditions? You've defended your positions to pass her over by stating that her criticisms of the council and the city invalidate her. But no city nor council is above reproach. In fact, it is only by interrogating ourselves that we may grow and become that much closer to the ideals that we espouse. A good leader is someone who strives for growth, who recognizes that things can be better and wants to do the work to get us there. Time and time again, this council protests that there is no racism in Simi Valley and none on the dais. And yet, at every opportunity, this council continues to align itself and the city with the wrong side of history. From your cocoon of privilege and comfort, you repeatedly ignore people with different perspectives than your own in effort to maintain a status quo that serves some, but not all of the people in this city. If no one else in your lives will say this to you, Mayor Mashburn, council members Judge and Kavanaugh, then I will. You should be ashamed of yourselves, and you should reconsider this blatantly racist and retaliatory behavior that you've exhibited towards council member Luvenos. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Rup Man? Rup Man, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I would actually not like to be on video, but I am happy to unmute myself. Okay. Firstly, I would like to mention, just starting off, that the woman who first spoke Tracy uses nonsensical sources. And as a child of a healthcare worker who works here at the Simi Valley Hospital, I request you to not take anything she said into consideration. Instead, use signs to guide your decisions and the fact that healthcare workers, especially nurses, are literally at their wits' end with what's going on. I'm calling in today, however, to support an effort to petition the council to redo the mayor pro tem appointment and appoint Ruth Luvenos to the position. Ruth has been passed up on twice now, breaking a longstanding tradition of rotation that was established in 2001. In the last meeting, councilwoman Kavanaugh and Mayor Mashburn made it clear that their decision was retaliatory in nature and that they refused to appoint Ruth to the comment she made criticizing the city validly for its history of systemic racism. Kavanaugh and Mashburn responded to this valid criticism of racism by making a racist decision, thus upholding her criticism in the first place. They have once again decided to suppress the voice of a woman of color, the only woman of color on the dais. I have a question for the mayor. Mayor Mashburn, why did you create One Simi, an organization you claim to be about racism, when you yourself continuously perpetuate and contribute to the racist reputation of this town? Put your actions where your mouth is. Ruth is the most qualified person on the dais, and she deserves this appointment more than anyone. Thank you so much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Navi Carr? Please unmute yourself and turn on your video if you wish.
Thank you, council members and mayor. I would like to support an effort to petition the council to redo the mayor pro tem vote and appoint council member Ruth Luvenos to the position. The council's bypass of the rotational cycle was a disgrace to the practice established in 2000. I demand council member Luvenos be appointed to the position to uphold the natural order of progression. She is more than qualified for the position and has continued to show so during her time on the dais. I also strongly disagree with the comments from the other council members from the previous council meeting where they state the city does not want someone who constantly criticizes the council and the town. I do, in fact, want someone that criticizes the town and people in power. Criticism triggers growth, and the city definitely needs growth at this time. I do not want a mayor pro tem who is complacent with the way the city functions at the moment. Criticism is integral to change. It's a basic leadership principle. And if our quote-unquote leaders cannot understand that, they must look inward and reevaluate their motivations as public servants. I demand you appoint Ruth Luvenos for the position of mayor pro tem. Failure to do so will be a blatant act of racism perpetuated by a misogynistic and bigoted council. Additionally, I would like to voice my disagreement of Don Gray as planning commissioner. With no real relevant experience, she is underqualified for the position. Merely having passion for urban planning is not enough. I have a passion for neurosurgery and even started out with that as my area of focus in college, yet I am no way qualified to have a surgical scalpel in my hand because I'm passionate about it. I ask the council to reconsider their decision to appoint Don Gray and nominate someone who is truly qualified, preferably a woman of color who has relevant engineering and planning experience because at this point, I wouldn't trust Don Gray to plan a birthday party, let alone a whole city. I would also like to touch on Tracy Cook's misinformed comments earlier. There are eight dimensions of wellness, but you cannot have the other seven if you're dead, so wear a mask. You're also able to achieve all eight dimensions of wellness without having businesses reopen. Also, your personal experience of not having any debts related to COVID does not mean others haven't died. So I don't see how that was relevant to your comments. I'm a daughter of a healthcare worker who has witnessed more deaths this year than in her entire career. So please do not listen to that nonsense.
Thank you.
Cassandra Douglas?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. I'm calling today to support an effort to petition the council to revisit the mayor pro tem vote and appoint council member Luvenos to the position. The council's decision to bypass the rotation was established in 2000 was yet another disgrace to the city. I demand that council member Luvenos be appointed as mayor pro tem to uphold the natural order of progression. Councilwoman Luvenos is more than qualified for the position. Since she's been elected, she's been more than monumental in passing body cam requirements for the police department. Passing of the development housing complex with low-income apartment zoning on Tappo and Alamo. She supported the Safe Park program, which we do need an update on. She has challenged SCE and their power safety shut-offs. I disagree with the comments from the other council members from the previous meeting where it was stated the city council does not want someone who constantly criticizes the council and the town. It is important that we have someone keeping all of you accountable, and that's what she is doing. I demand that you appoint Ruth Luvenos for the position of mayor pro tem. Failure to do so will be a blatant act of racism perpetuated by misogynistic and bigoted council. We've experienced enough of this from you, Keith Mashburn, enough from you, Mike Judge, and enough from you, DeeDee Kavanaugh. And with Mia Poncetto bringing Simi Valley to the news again for racism, you all should be reconsidering every step you make on the dais. And also, I would like to second Rebecca's comment. Please report the amount of available funds for housing and use it to pay for rent for all unhoused folks in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcel McCullough? Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Hello, I'm Marcel McCullough. I was raised in Simi Valley and recently returned. I'm a homeowner in central Simi. I'm calling today because I would like to support the effort to petition the council to revisit the mayor pro tem vote and appoint council member Ruth Luvenos to the position. I understand that she has been passed over not once but twice at this point for not very valid reasons at all. I'm concerned that a well-established rotation of council members having the opportunity to serve as mayor pro tem would be interrupted after 20 years because some council members are uncomfortable by the stance council member Luvenos has taken against the very real issue of racism and misogyny in our community and council. At the last council meeting, as a justification for passing on her, council member Kavanaugh said, and quote, "She continues to call our community racist," unquote. Mayor Mashburn accused her of not loving our city and of verbally tearing it down. And here is your major failing because you are now refusing to listen to your constituents. Council member Luvenos is not alone in saying these things. Our neighbors and fellow citizens are saying them as well because the issue is very real. There are people who are affected by this town's systemic racial issues every day and who many of you fail to listen to. And as others have pointed out, we have Soho Karen, Mia Poncetto, a Simi Valley former resident, who is showing her racist self all over the news. This failure to listen is a failure of leadership, and really, you should be ashamed. I want someone who can criticize the council and our town and wants us to actively improve. We cannot be complacent. If you do not care about every resident of Simi Valley, even the ones who criticize you, who push you, and who loudly demand things to be better than, then you need to reevaluate your motivations to be a public servant. I would also like to touch on the first speaker, I believe, Ms. Cook. I'm a licensed healthcare practitioner. I'm a licensed acupuncturist. I'm not a practitioner of Western medicine, but I've had enough training, formal training in Western medicine to know that pretty much everything she said is nonsense. We need to wear masks. We need to believe in science. We need to stop the spread of COVID. It is running rampant in our county. And if we don't do something active, it's just going to keep getting worse. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Michael Caputo, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great, sorry. Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for giving me your time. I would like to start by saying I love Simi Valley. I'm proud to be a long time here. And given that, I would like to support an effort to the petition to relook at the mayor pro tem position for council member Ruth Luvenos. Last month, December, I was surprised that one of the reasons she was skipped for this role was because of her divisive conduct for calling out racism in Simi. I would like to challenge the council to take that, it takes more courage to call out racism and act on it than it does to just make a proclamation that it's bad. Considering the national condemnation that we received last year from the last year's mayor pro tem's post, apologies withstanding, I don't think that last year's mayor pro tem should even get the chance to nominate this year's mayor pro tem. Also, on technical issue, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you are truly technically a councilperson, though that you can second it. That's between you guys, and you can work that out. Additionally, though, I think the nominee is a person who only won by six people, and I believe that's not serving the majority of Simi Valley. I was very impressed with all the young people that have been calling in last month and have been calling in today, listening to our youth, our future, and seeing how involved they are and knowing that their numbers are growing, and we want them to grow here in Simi. It's a good thing. We have to listen to the youth. Ruth fighting for youth and working class of Simi through issues like safe car lodging, unhoused neighbors, and low-income housing, and taking on COVID-19 as a very real issue from wayback. I wish Ruth, we listened to you more than even I was listening. And those are so important. And a big thing in Simi with the low housing, my daughter had moved out of Simi because of lack of affordable housing. So I really appreciate her fight for that. Personally, I can say since watching these council meetings, Ruth brings a level of professionalism, determination, and critical thinking that I would want to see much, much more in this council. Her, DeeDee Kavanaugh asked, council member DeeDee Kavanaugh last week, "A mayor pro tem should be reflective of our best." I think that appointing Ruth would be an action of our best interest, our best direction, our braver selves. I get why you did what you did. Getting challenged isn't easy, believe me. I have teenagers, and I can't get pronouns right. But as you're challenged by council member Luvenos, actions speak much, much louder than words, and words are extremely important. At Simi, we were challenged by what she said, granted. But if you're accepted, if I still have time, if those were accepted, I believe you must consider skipping. Not skipping Ruth, sorry, I'm reading this on web screen. Do you see another? Getting called out and then working towards it, towards a better self, is a sign of great leadership. Considering the events of last week, we see that democracy takes hard work, tough talk, and tough discussion. I think that's broken for that. I see council member Ruth Luvenos putting that to work and being a great example for our community. I think if you search your conscience, appointing council member Ruth Luvenos would not only be the right thing to do for this council, it'd be the right thing for Simi's future. And on the side of the charging stations at the hobby office. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Kevin Welker? Mr. Welker, please unmute yourself. Mr. Welker, are you there?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Kevin Welker, and I'm a 42-year Simi resident. Council member Luvenos does more for this community than all of you combined. Passing her up for mayor pro tem a second time is shameful. The council's bypass of the rotation cycle was a disgrace to the practice that began in 2000. Council member Luvenos is more than qualified for the position, and I strongly disagree with the comments from other council members at the previous council meeting where they stated the city does not want someone who constantly criticizes the council and the town. Criticism allows growth, and the city definitely needs growth. I do not want a mayor pro tem who is complacent with the way things are right now. Criticism is necessary for change, and if our leaders can't understand that, then we are doomed. I grew up here. You Republicans have never truly represented all citizens, just the ones with the same values. Ruth really does represent all of Simi Valley, even though a large portion of the population has always been represented, the white portion. Everyone else is finally represented, and we can see it drives you all crazy. Do what's right for once. Be better. Your constituents are talking to you. It's time to listen. And Mike Judge, you're still a disgrace. Nothing has changed. You should still resign. You're worthless. Thanks. I yield any remaining time.
Thank you.
Chloe Custodio?
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hello, my name is Chloe Custodio, and I have lived in Simi all my life. I am speaking today because I, too, would like to support an effort to petition the council to redo the mayor pro tem vote and appoint council member Luvenos to the position. I believe that bypassing the natural profession established 20 years ago sets a dangerous precedent, that this council will not adhere to simple, established traditions and rules set by those before them, those who were also elected by residents of this city simply because it does not suit the desires of or is not convenient to the agenda of some members on the current council. But what I see as even more dangerous than that is the reasoning behind why the council decided to do so and the way in which they handled it. I'm a young woman, a young woman of color. I have aspirations of one day being an attorney. woman, a young woman of color. I have aspirations of one day being an attorney, fighting for equality for marginalized people, maybe even running for public office. But to see the way that the mere idea of a fellow woman of color like me being appointed to a higher position for a mere year, who has done genuine good for the marginalized in the city, the way that she has been received and berated for asserting facts about systemic racism existing here is discouraging, to say the least. In the very city that raised me, my hometown, in the same place where I've been told by teachers in the same school district that I am capable of changing the world. I care about this city all the same as any of you, and to care about something deeply is to be able to be critical of it, and I care about changing it for the better. And to be met with comments like, "Why don't you just move out?" is disheartening. But to see those same tactics used by the members of the local government running this city against one of their own is abhorrent. Your actions and words set a tone for the reputation of this council and the city and the residents within it. As a voting citizen and a lifelong resident, I implore you to please use that power responsibly and respectfully. In regards to the COVID-19 crisis... Sorry. In regards to the COVID-19 crisis, nurses are working in humane hours. You make a post thanking them, but if you choose to listen to Tracy or adhere to her values, you're effectively spitting in their faces while they are asking for a lay vest. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Connor Lot? Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello?
Yes, we hear you.
I just want to say thank you for your time this evening, and I'm also, um, speaking to support this effort to petition the council for, uh, council member Ruth Luvvenos. Um, as within systems and businesses, um, when there is a rightful person qualified and worthy for the position, um, to be skipped over is unfortunate. And so I really would, um, really urge and, and recommend that this would be a very good move for our community. Uh, our community is diverse and complex, and I have friends, um, and people that have served me, um, throughout the years. Uh, I moved here when I was three years old, um, and have enjoyed my time here. And so just ask that I believe she would serve a great deal. And for me, knowing people from all around the world, um, as right now I tour with a band and before COVID, we were touring the world, and seeing the value in criticism, especially it's very uncomfortable, but it also forces us to look at ourselves, to change for the better, to gain a new perspective. And I have seen the value, and though it takes longer to get there, the value at the end is better than just moving forward because of like-minded people. Echo chambers and, um, other, like, um, self-thinking, uh, places within organizations allow a stunted growth, um, within space. And so I do think that racism is a very real thing, as I've seen it, um, by people in this city, uh, very blatantly. And so know that this is a problem within our community, and if there is discomfort in council members, uh, Luvvenos is, um, talking about it, it is something that we need to address and work to unify, um, efforts towards breaking the unhealthy patterns in our city. And so I urge you to please consider this and ask that you would appoint her, um, as the mayor pro tem, um, for this next, uh, season. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
April Amonte? Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is April Amonte. I'm a lifelong resident of Simi Valley, and I'm also asking you to, uh, encourage, um, uh, sorry, to encourage, uh, the reconsideration of mayor pro tem to go to Ruth Luvvenos. Um, the bypass of the rotation cycle goes against the order of the practice established in two thousand. Um, just to uphold the natural order of progression, she must be appointed. And she's more than qualified, as other people have said. She challenged SoCal Edison about the power shut-offs, passed a body cam requirement for the police department, passed the development of a housing complex with low-income apartment zoning, supported the safe parking program, and requested micro kitchens for people to sell food from their homes for extra money. I found the comments from the other council members, some of them, um, disturbing from that last meeting as well, that, that the city doesn't want someone who constantly criticizes Simi Valley, but I actually do want someone who constantly criticizes the people in power in any city and its systemic power structures therein. I'm certain that all of, you know, my fellow white people on the city council members would consciously agree that white people are not superior to any other race and that we're all created equal. So I guess I just have to ask my fellow white people, it's a natural reaction when someone calls us or something we support racist to feel defensive, but we have to ask ourselves, what are we defending and why? After all, we are taught in school, and it's wrong, that racism ended with slavery and Martin Luther King Jr., and that racists are just terrible monsters from the past. But the truth is that racism metastasizes like a cancer in different forms throughout time and generations. And whiteness and the upholding of it, um, relies on historical amnesia to survive so that we can distance ourselves with the horrors of our ancestors and protect our innocence. Um, and some council members insisted that this has nothing to do with race by denying her her position. But if race doesn't matter, then why is it on housing and credit card applications? And why have I heard personal stories from black people my own age who got called the N-word in their Simi schools in the early two thousands? I deeply understand the human response to live in denial that a problem exists, but the unfortunate truth is that nothing in America is untouched by race, unfortunately. Um, we may not be responsible for the choices our ancestors made, but we are responsible for our choices now. We are responsible as those currently living on this planet to fix and change our systems and weed out racism and white supremacy. And I know growth and change are not comfortable. Believe me, as an artist, I, I, I know this, and as a white person who's constantly trying to educate myself and be better myself, but this won't happen if we're more concerned with protecting our egos than creating a safe world for Black, Brown, and Indigenous people. And we have now learned that ignoring the problem does not make it go away. And isn't the foundation of democracy to question and criticize the systems in place to assure that all people have the same human rights? Not just the groups of people who are already content with the way the system favors them? I don't want someone in power who's complacent with the way things are at the moment. We need to keep growing, changing, and moving forward.
Wrap up, please.
Thank you. Uh, this is much bigger, like I said, than anybody's ego, and we're not being victimized if someone calls us a racist. And it doesn't mean we're a bad person. It just means we're currently supporting systems that continue to oppress non-white people. And the beautiful thing is, we can grow, change, and work to change ourselves in addition to systems that don't serve everyone equally. Please take the fair, just action and appoint Ruth Luvvenos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sarah Trun?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, cool. Well, my name is Sarah, and I'm a lifelong resident of Simi. First, I'd like to say that I disagree with all of the comments made by the first speaker, Tracy Cook. Um, as someone who has a degree in lab science and hopes to study public health in the future, I do believe that mental health is an important issue. It's very dear to me, and I don't think the definition of mental health is letting people do whatever they personally would like, if it puts other people in the community at risk. Secondly, I would also like to support the effort to petition the council to redo the mayor pro tem vote and appoint council member Ruth Luvvenos to the position. Um, to me, having council member Luvvenos as mayor pro tem would mean that the Simi Valley council is making an effort to support diversity of both thought and experiences in our city. I believe that council member Luvvenos represents a significant community in Simi with progressive values and ideals that have long felt suppressed or overshadowed by the city's history of racism and discrimination. For those of you who are rolling their eyes at the statement, I want to argue that none of us, including me, including you, are safe from being racist unless we all make consistent efforts to champion diversity and equity. Implicit bias often makes society view outspoken women of color as troublemakers, as complainers, as people who constantly criticize. But I believe that often we are the ones who simply want more just, fair, and free lives for everyone around us. I work at a nonprofit organization that is going through a long, expensive, and thoughtful process of making our organization more equitable, a place that centers marginalized voices that have historically been silenced. And this process is happening at organizations, governments, communities all over the country, especially following the prominent racial justice movements last year. In light of all this, a city council that refuses to acknowledge any implicit bias or discrimination is not interested in learning about equitable practices. It ignores any discomfort felt when committee members describe what it's like to live in a majority white town seems painfully dated. Appointing council member Luvvenos to mayor pro tem and trusting in good faith that she would be an excellent leader for all of us would be a great first step towards equity and justice. And beyond that, I encourage council members to prioritize these values of equity and justice in all decisions that they make and grow from the events of 2020 instead of pretending nothing has happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly McManaman? Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. My name is Kelly McManaman. I was born and raised in Simi Valley. Today, I'm here to express my grievances of the city council once again depriving Councilwoman Ruth Luvvenos of a position that she is rightfully qualified for. Councilwoman Dee Dee Kavanaugh withheld the position from Ruth on the basis that she painted Simi Valley as a racist city. Ruth speaking about the racism that not only thrives in this city but is enabled by elected officials is not painting the city in a poor light, but rather bringing attention to a prevalent issue. Who would you consider to be the more qualified city council person? The one who recognizes that the city is filled with potholes, or the one who says there aren't any potholes and refuses to fix any damage? Racism is not just a myth. It exists here, and we are waiting for you to address it. If you look up hashtag Dear Simi Valley on Twitter, you can find some examples from our community. Mayor Mashburn, I'm disappointed in the way that the HR report was weaponized as an excuse to not appoint Ruth. You appear to effectively punish Ruth for seeking out the appropriate resources in a workplace. What precedent does that set for women of color in Simi Valley? Should I too be scared that if I feel discriminated against in a workplace, I should refrain from seeking assistance because it could potentially impede on any promotions or titles? Last meeting, Mashburn posed a question in regards to Ruth speaking about the racism in the city. He said, and I quote, "In fact, I wondered why do you want to be here? Tonight, I'll answer that for you from my perspective. My mother and Tias migrated to Simi Valley from Mexico in the nineteen eighties. Almost all the family I know was born and raised in Simi Valley. My point being, it is just as much our hometown as it is yours, and I stand by improving it instead of just leaving. Just like Ruth Luvvenos was just as fairly elected to represent the people and by extension fulfill the mayor pro tem position, just as every single city council member that's on this dais. When we talk about racism, it is not to attack you. It is not to belittle our city, and it is not to cause division. It is because too many Simi Valley community members live a reality where blatant discrimination, implicit bias, and microaggressions are the normal. Mayor Mashburn, you might respond with your progress and creation of one Simi, but I implore you to reach out to your constituents, all of them. Once again, you can check out the hashtag Dear Simi Valley on Twitter. We went trending in California with how many responses we got. Even reach out to Rise Simi Valley to have a real conversation about racism in the city, not just to the minorities you specifically handpicked. Alternatively, I would like to know how one collaborates with one Simi or contacts them. As always, my email and Rise's email are open for civil conversation, fruitful change, and productive collaboration. I also denounce the first speaker. We need to take the proper healthcare precautions to ensure that we slow the spread of COVID and look out for our healthcare workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Natasha Zake, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Um, hello, my name is Natasha Zake, and I am a lifelong resident of Simi Valley. I would like to add my support in the petition for the council to redo the mayor pro tem vote to appoint council member Ruth Luvvenos for that, for this position. The council's decision to bypass this twenty-year-long cycle in order to skip over council member Luvvenos is disgraceful and goes to show the racism and misogyny that is taking place at hand. As a woman of color who is more than qualified to take on the mayor pro tem position, the fact that the council member stated in the previous meeting that the city would not want someone who constantly criticizes the city is false. I personally would want someone who is not complacent in regards to improving the city in which we reside in. I would, I would want someone who is able to see the growth and the change that can ha, take place and create a city that is not only safe but also inclusive of everyone from different backgrounds. As a Black woman who grew up in Simi and left to attend and graduate from the University of Arizona, I was disappointed to see that the state of racism in this town is prevalent and shown through the, through the decision that was made in the last council meeting in December. I demand that council member Luvvenos be appointed as mayor pro tem, and failure to do so, in fact, highlights that the city is complicit in the racism and misogyny that they are perpetuating by not giving council member Luvvenos her rightful position. Thank you for your time. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Elise Umetza?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So my name is Elise. I'm a resident of Simi, and I'm also calling in tonight to urge that you revisit your decision to appoint council member Dee Dee Kavanaugh as mayor pro tem and reinstate the rotation cycle for mayor pro tem by appointing council member Ruth Luvvenos to the position. Council member Luvvenos has shown through her experience that she is a proactive, thoughtful, and responsible representative who is perfectly fit for the appointment of mayor pro tem. From her work to support unhoused residents with a safe parking program to her passing of a body camera requirement for the police department, council member Luvvenos has been a strong example of someone who is representing her constituents well. Furthermore, the hypocrisy of the logic you used in the last meeting of calling council member Luvvenos divisive and suggesting that she is an unfit representative for the position, that hypocrisy is not lost on me, and it seems is not lost on many others who are calling in tonight. The mayor pro tem elected last year when you first bypassed a decades-long precedent. Mike Judge has brought public embarrassment to the position in ways that I'm sure you're all tired of hearing about by now. But suffice to say, particularly in contrast to that, I find your reasoning for bypassing council member Luvvenos to be biased and unreasonable, and I feel that it dismisses your constituents who elected her, who feel that she represents her interests, and represents them well. I see no valid reasoning as to why you have disrupted the precedent for mayor pro tem that has been followed for two decades, or that has been followed into the last two appointments. It was a disgrace to do it once, and it is blatantly discriminatory to do it again in a year where it has been brought to the surface of society, the work that all of us need to do to address systemic racism everywhere, including in Simi Valley. I wholeheartedly join the calls for you to check your egos, to acknowledge that all of us have lifelong work to do to combat injustice, and to represent the actual interests of your people by appointing council member Luvvenos as mayor pro tem. Thank you for your time, and thank you, council member Luvvenos, for representing me and my interests. I'm proud to have a council member like you represent me who is prepared and willing to address the systemic racism and other issues of injustice in the city that has great need for critical and constructive change. I'd also like to note, uh, to state that I also disagree with the first speaker. We need to take the proper healthcare precautions to keep our community safe from COVID as advised by our public health experts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Campow? Please unmute yourself. Ms. Campow, are you there?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I was glad to see that Dee Dee Kavanaugh will serve this year's term as 2021 mayor pro tem. This newly re-elected council member has many years of city and community experience and has always represented Simi Valley capably and extremely well. I have known her for over twenty years and have served with her on other boards. She stays informed and does her research, which makes her a great decision-maker. She does not let her personal opinions compromise her decisions. As a city leader, she represents our residents fairly and with the utmost dignity and honor. She loves the city and respectively listens to each and every one, no matter what the issue, their political party, or ethnicity. Ethnicity. If it becomes necessary, I can trust that Dee Dee Kavanaugh is the right choice to represent and lead our city with a cool head towards serving the needs of our residents. Thank you. Pam Campow, Simi Valley resident.
Tom Adams? Please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I was both hopeful and confident that the council would not fall into prior habits of racial and socioeconomic disenfranchisement for which the city seems to have earned an unshakable reputation. Most recently, you have decided to exclude one of your peers from holding the position of Mayor Pro Tem. You try to say that your decision to make this exclusion has nothing to do with race, but rather with personal differences you have with Councilwoman Luvenos's style of leadership. Frankly, it is my opinion that the real reason you are doing this is because you fear reprisals from those whom you consider your supporters, those voters who support you fear losing. Maybe your consciences are aligned with theirs, and you see nothing wrong in making this latest decision to exclude. However, I believe this is not the case. I believe you know exactly what you are doing, and I believe you know that it is wrong. Let me recount how we got here. First, there was the council's decision to refute SB 54. Second, in response to that faithful decision, enough voters mobilized to elect Ruth Luvenos to the city council. Third, with the rest of our city, you came to realize that Councilwoman Luvenos is a bright, capable, and highly informed individual who does not take her elected position lightly. As a part of her elected duties, she began to expose and address the crippling effects an ironclad status quo has had on many of us who live here. Consequently, I am sure that sharing the council chambers with her has not been easy for you. But then, if it were, she wouldn't be doing the job she was elected to do. Fourth, many of your supporters demanded public censure for the way Councilwoman Luvenos has conducted her tenure as the people's representative. Wisely, the council chose to avert public censure, but wisdom and reason were kicked to the side once again when the council decided to skip over, not once, but now twice, the appointment of Councilwoman Luvenos to Mayor Pro Tem, a position for which an unchallenged rotation has existed for the past 20 years. I recall thinking after the first time you did this, well, it looks like they got their censure after all. So now, perhaps emboldened by the latest election or possibly driven by the fear of losing the support of voters, you make this a double leap backwards. Again, blatantly throwing into the faces of those who did not vote for you that power resides where it resides, that the democratic process can and will be thwarted by those who hold power and rage at the thought that others besides those who wield it have representation in this city.
Wrap up your statements, Mr. Adams.
Wrapping up now, thank you, sir. And that the ironclad status quo is still holding fast in Simi Valley. In light of what I have read and seen so far, I have little confidence that anything I say will change your minds. Councilwoman Listor, I praise you for your wisdom and the courage to vote your conscience. To the others of you, I know that many share my disappointment in you
Sir, please wrap it up.
For your failure to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant Keller? Please unmute yourself.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right. Well, my name is Grant, and I am a Simi Valley native. I'm in selfie mode right now. I didn't mean to turn on the video, but that's okay. I moved to Simi Valley in second grade. I graduated from Simi High in 2010, and I came back here, you know, to try to start my life. And in 2018, I proudly voted for Councilmember Luvenos. She supports the values that I hold true. She's a fighter for LGBTQ rights. She's a fighter for our environment. She's a fighter for marginalized communities. And each of you may do it in your own certain ways, but there's no one that does it like Councilmember Luvenos on that dais. And I've been upset a few times over the last six months with our local leaders. When the Black Lives Matter protest on June 6th messaged as a possible danger to our community, when there was, you know, the refusal to believe that some of our residents member Luvenos was passed over, as like there was some, some progress. I felt like there was some unity. And I believe that Councilmember Kavanaugh, Mayor Pro Tem Kavanaugh, had shown her true colors during that vote by accepting the position as Mayor Pro Tem. Because you were Mayor Pro Tem two years ago in the rotational system. You had just won a hard-fought election, and it wasn't a resounding vote. So I'm confused on how a qualified, talented individual is passed over in the decades-precedented rotational system. And I'm just here to share my disappointment and embarrassment and encourage the petition to review the decision as Mayor Pro Tem. And I ask for all of you to take a step back so we could take two steps forward and move forward as a Simi Valley community. I thank you for your time and your service, and I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aubrey Lancaster? Aubrey Lancaster, please unmute yourself.
This is Aubrey Lancaster. I'm from District 1. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I was born and raised here in Simi, and I'm raising my son here. This is my home, my community, and I was thrilled to vote for Councilwoman Luvenos in 2018 to bring much-needed perspective to our city government. This is why I'm really disappointed that she has been skipped again for Mayor Pro Tem. She has been hands-on with this council and with our community, and she's working really hard to represent marginalized members of this community. She's the only one speaking up against systemic racism, and for that, she's been admonished by other members of the council as well as the mayor. She is a resource and an asset to this council. Instead of insisting that there's no racism in Simi, I would really like to see our city listen and take action to address the concerns she shed light on. I urge the council to give her a fair turn as Mayor Pro Tem and to stop dismissing her when she voices what her constituents elected her to represent. Representation matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Plyler? Please unmute yourself. Ms. Plyler, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Catherine Plyler, and I support the effort to petition the council to redo the Mayor Pro Tem vote and appoint Councilwoman Ruth Luvenos to the position. I don't need to speak about her qualifications. I don't need to speak about her accomplishments. You all know that she is the best suited for the job. You are choosing to overlook her. Why? Because you are afraid of her. You are afraid of her supporters. You are afraid of who she fights for. You are afraid of the youth who seek representation. You are afraid of the people of color who demand racial justice. You are afraid of the LGBT community who celebrates their beautiful diversity without fear. And you are afraid of me. But we are not the people who you fear most. No. I used to think that you were only scared of us, the progressives, the liberals, the Democrats, but it's just not true. After watching the disgusting footage at the Capitol, I have changed my mind. After seeing Trump supporters desert him one by one, removing his powers brick by brick, I have come to a different conclusion. And here it is. Deep in your bones, you fear your people the most, the right-wingers, the Trump supporters, the Republicans. You fear your friends. Look at how quickly the towers of power can fall. You fear rocking the boat because you know that if you step out of line, your people, your friends, will be quick to cut all power you currently possess, and they will send you to the plank. That is the crux of our problem here today. You don't want change in our city because you fear the retaliation of your supporters. This has nothing to do with us and has everything to do with you. And so I challenge you to adopt my New Year's resolution. Do not make decisions out of fear. In fifth grade, there was a poster in my classroom that read, "What is popular is not always right. What is right is not always popular." This has stuck with me, and I hope it sticks with you too. Be brave in the face of your friends. Do not choose to sink in the ship of disgrace. Seize a lifeboat, change, grow, learn, make amends, take risks. Accept my plea and reconsider Luvenos for the position of Mayor Pro Tem. I hope you choose to lead with bravery, not fear. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more who's registered under a different name, Ms. Jennifer Crum.
Hi, this is actually Gracie Peckle. I am registered under the wrong Zoom, unfortunately, but yes. My name is Gracie Peckle, and I would like to support an effort to petition the council to redo the Mayor Pro Tem vote. Like nearly every other caller, Councilmember Ruth Luvenos should rightfully be appointed to the Mayor Pro Tem position. And the choice by the council to bypass her was nothing more than a bigoted and racist attempt to silence voices of color in this community. Although you refuse to recognize it, Councilwoman Luvenos represents the values and opinions of thousands of your constituents. By failing to appoint her as Mayor Pro Tem, you are making a clear and indisputable statement that you do not wish to represent the whole of this city and only those Simi Valians who support your political agenda. We are living through a very fragile time for democracy in our nation, and to undermine it at the city level only serves to reduce public confidence further in our democratic institutions. Many of you on the dais are teaching that democracy can be thrown out the window when someone's feelings get hurt. It seems quite hypocritical to me that you attempt to claim you are patriots while indulging in autocracy. There is no question that Councilwoman Luvenos is qualified, if not overqualified, for this position. Yet, this should not have to matter. She is a duly-elected representative of this city and should not have to prove herself to you. It is obvious that the decision you made merely stems from your personal grievances with her because she chose to hold you accountable rather than be complacent. If unity is truly your intention, then you would reverse this decision immediately. If not, our voices will only grow stronger with every attempt you make to silence us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the public members wishing to make comment.
At this time, we'll have the comments from the council members regarding the public comments. And we will start with Councilmember Luvenos.
Mayor, thank you. I, I will, will address Ms., Ms. Cook's concerns when we do a calendar shareout. But I would like to acknowledge and thank everyone, including Ms. Cook, who took the time to engage civically in the process. I cannot tell you how inspiring it is to see so many different generations of our residents engaged in our local government, in the political process, and airing their concerns. And I, I want to thank everyone who gave public comments. And I, I, I don't even know what to say. There are consequences to actions, including what we saw happen at the Capitol last week. And it is clear that when 22, at least 22 residents, just from the Zoom comments, not counting those that have been emailed or those that did not get to email in, are voicing their concern about making sure that our democracy is intact, that they have valid concerns, and those concerns should be addressed. So I will be asking at 9:00 B. for us to reconsider the, the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next comment, Elaine Lister.
I too would like to thank all those who engaged in tonight's commentary and all the eloquent things that were said, and I appreciate all the involvement. I'd like to actually speak about Tracy Cook's concerns and about what is happening. Clearly, we are very aware that the levels of cases of COVID in Ventura County are extremely high, at their highest levels ever. And our hospitals are filled, and of course, as attested to by several people whose families are related to healthcare, there are some real concerns, and they are seeing their fatigued family members dealing with this problem. Ms. Cook, though, makes a valid point about that we need to be sure that we are addressing full health. And I don't think she's saying that means we stop wearing masks, we stop being careful, et cetera. So I, I, we will have more dialogue about it. And I just, I've been thinking about this just because I did speak with a friend whose son committed suicide recently. And so there is true mental costs to what's, what's happening. And at the same time, I delivered bags of groceries to another friend whose family can't come out because they're all dealing with COVID in their family. So I, it is, it is a complex decision, a complex issue that we need to discuss more. With regards to the comments that were made about the Mayor Pro Tem position, actually, I just wanted to make one comment. Several people use the word misogyny, and I want to be sure people are aware that misogyny, by definition, means the hatred of women. There are three women on the city council that serve, and all have good ideas, different ideas. And I don't believe that that word fits when you have one, one woman not selected, another woman selected. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, that I think we need to be careful with our dialogue. But I'm very appreciative of all the comments, and I'm sure there'll be further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge, do you have any comments?
Just like to thank everybody for expressing themselves and, and taking the time out to go on the Zoom meeting. I have no other comments.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Kavanaugh.
Just one moment. I just wanted to thank everyone for participating, showing our democracy and the ability we have to voice our opinions. While we may not always agree, we all have the right to express our opinions. And I'm thankful that you and I are able to do that in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll make mine as brief as possible. My concern is we're entering a critical time, and some of the speakers brought that up with the COVID issue. And our city is entering a very critical time. And we have to look at those from the mental, mental health needs that so many are needing help. And we have to look at our business community and the direction it's going. And that should be the focus of this council. Is the coming days, all indications are, they're not getting better. It's getting worse. And I don't know how many of us truly understand the situation that so many of, in our business community are in, and so many mental health issues that we're all facing, whether it be families, children, you know, the list goes on and on. There's so much. And it's come into a critical point, and I think this council needs to be aware of it and start looking at ways to assist our city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 6, the consent calendar, and there are no resolutions for consideration this evening.
Okay, there was what, one item, I think? Two. So do we want to poll two? So usually what we do. We have the minutes and...
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion if you like.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we accept the consent calendar, items one and two.
I'll second it.
Motion and second. Call for the vote.
Please vote yes for me.
Please vote yes for me also.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there are no items this evening under item seven, continue business. There are no items this evening under item eight, new business. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item nine A, City Council Member Reports.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Louevnos on your report.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 16th, we had Ventura County Press Conference that I just listened to with regard to COVID. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. On, I'm sorry, before that, Tuesday, December 15th, I attended the Simi Valley's Council Meeting at 5:00. They discussed the Youth Council Survey to see whether or not the youth summit should be held online or what kind of format they would like to do the youth summit. Usually, they hold it at a large forum, usually the Ron Reagan Library or Brandeis University. But due to the pandemic right now, they want to make sure everyone keeps safe. And so they're trying to figure out how they're going to hold the youth summit this year, whether virtually or not. So if you haven't responded to that survey, I think it's still open, so I think you can still respond to that. And then they also held a virtual open mic night in December. And again, I want to thank the Youth Council for their hard work. They're just amazing, amazing. I love working with the Youth Council. They're just hardworking, all their committees, their social media committee, their outreach committee, all the committees that they have to have these open mic nights and to have all these activities and games online. They have a lot more planned for this year, for 2021. So just keep an eye out because they're doing a phenomenal job. And I know a couple of people mentioned already mental health issues. And I reiterate the role that Youth Council plays in providing that support for mental health is really important. And it's something that is very much obviously needed in this community. On Wednesday, December 30th, again, we have the Ventura County Elected Officials Meeting with regard to COVID, which I believe we've all been attending. And then on January 6th, we had another Simi Valley Youth Council Meeting. And we had a presentation by Kristin Tignack on 211. So in case those of you are not aware of what 211 is, so if you need information or you need support from the county, but you don't, it's not a 911 call, like you just want to know, hey, where can I get, you know, if I'm a business and I want to get a business loan, you can call them and get that information. If you want to know, you know, where you can renew your driver's license, just general information, you can call 211 and they can direct you to the place that you need to go to get that information. And the purpose of 211 is to alleviate the 911 system. So people are not calling 911 for just like questions, that things that are not emergencies. The Youth Council also talked about working on a college counseling application scholarship workshop. So they're working on that. If you want to have input, please come to the next Simi Valley Youth Council Meeting and provide input. We also had a Boy Scout that was there that was working on a merit badge for, I believe it was for citizenship in the community. I'm not sure, but if you need that sign off, please let me know. I'm happy to sign that off for you. With regard to January 6th, you know, I just want to make a statement with regard to that because it was, it is something that is impacting our community. And I do feel that we need to make a statement. And the statement that I made and I released on social media is that the violent attacks by domestic terrorists that happened at our nation's Capitol, where duly elected officials were targeted on January 6th, goes against our constitutional duty, which is part of the preamble, to ensure domestic tranquility. And those who incited it are complicit in the betrayal to our country and its democratic principles. And I stand by that and I am calling on all of the City Council Members to make a statement denouncing the activities that happened at the U.S. Capitol with regard to the insurrection and that our city write a resolution denouncing the actions that happened there, especially incitement of violence and domestic terrorism against duly elected officials. I would also ask that the city fly our flags at half-staff to honor fallen U.S. Capitol Officer Brian Siznick. And I believe today they announced that another U.S. Capitol Officer has died due to this insurrection at the U.S. Capitol. And I think it's important that we as a city demonstrate our acknowledgement of what happened at the U.S. Capitol and that we, I'll be asking for that as 9B. With regard to the COVID, you know, we are, the COVID meetings that we had, we are still at 0% ICU capacity. Over the weekend, we had almost 3,300 new cases in Ventura County, 17 new deaths, for a total of 351 deaths in Ventura County. I just had another family member that passed away due to COVID. And my family, this is four family members that we've lost in our family in the past three months due to COVID. And I would like to make sure that we do not dishonor all of those healthcare workers by diminishing or by letting up on any of the health restrictions. It is dishonorable and it is unfathomable that we would dishonor the work of everyone that's in the healthcare profession by diminishing this pandemic and the work and trauma that all the healthcare workers, from the janitors to the nurses and the doctors are going through. If we are going to thank our healthcare workers, then we have to do that by making sure that everyone is wearing a mask, that we are avoiding gatherings with people outside of our households. It's the reason that I'm not there tonight, because I would rather keep all of you safe. My colleagues, city staff, I would rather make sure that all of you are safe. That's why I'm here at home, because I would not like to, I would rather not take the risk of any of you carrying home COVID. And they did report that 59% of transmission of COVID is from asymptomatic carriers. So just because you don't have symptoms of COVID, just because you don't have fever, doesn't mean that you can't carry it to someone else. And even if you're vaccinated, you can still carry it to someone else, someone who may not have the immune system, to be able to fight off COVID. And it is a deadly disease that is killing hundreds of thousands of Americans. We are experiencing three deaths, almost three deaths per minute in this country right now due to this COVID pandemic. So now is not the time to let up. If we want to help our businesses and our homeless residents, then we need to put our money where our mouth is as a city and put the funds that we have for redevelopment to help those who are homeless or those that are about to be homeless and to help our businesses. And I will help personally write any grants that we need to write to make sure that our businesses are taken care of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly, I don't think any of us are diminishing or want to diminish or negate in any way the effect that's happening. We are very aware of it, that lives are being lost and this is a tragic time with COVID. I'll speak a little bit about that in a moment. With regards to my calendar, on Tuesday, December 15th, I attended One Legacy Live Love Donate Life. Basically, it was a virtual meeting encouraging organ tissue donations and heard from several people whose lives were saved because of the heroic and valiant decisions made by people to choose to be organ tissue donors. And so I would like to encourage others and really that happens when you are getting your license renewed. But do consider the lives that can be saved and make that choice. On Wednesday, December 16th, I attended the Simi Valley Veterans Service Task Force. Appreciate Mark Larson stepping up to be the gentleman who was cheering that. And thank you to Ryan Valencia, who through Christie Smith's office has been cheering that. But the desire of that task force is to find a place for, a centralized place for veterans services. And so I celebrate the work of that group and encourage veterans to become mindful and aware of that task force and feel free to log in with ideas of ways to solve that desire. Later in that day, I attended the Simi Valley Arts Commission Meeting and appreciate the efforts there, finding ways to celebrate and share things culturally, most of which, of course, all of which is virtually. Some of their activities that happened the month of December. They had Elf the Musical from last year, an opportunity to watch it virtually. And hopefully, many of you took that opportunity as well as a virtual cabaret. But appreciate the efforts there and still the need to support the arts. Of course, most of us were able to celebrate or in our own way, Hanukkah or Christmas and hopefully people had a nice opportunity to be with loved ones or else to at least be contemplative and find a way to have a moment of repose. That I was just looking quickly at my calendar on December, Sunday, December 20th. I had the opportunity to play the piano in church. I think there were four of us. But I was able to broadcast that out. And so I realize so much of us, of what we do these days is virtual. But it is a way, and I want to also commend our staff for such an excellent time this evening, showing all of our speakers, thank you, David, for virtually bringing all of our, those who desire to participate. I thought it made a big difference. So Mayor, I appreciate you making that recommendation and making it happen. Because it makes us more, I feel more truly connected and involved. On Tuesday, December 29th, I was part of a little surprise gathering, which I know many of the rest of you were as well, to recognize Marie Bennett with the Strathairn Lifetime Achievement Award. And I was particularly appreciative because just a few days previous, she had been giving her report to Simi Valley's Arts Commission with the work on the foundation, what they're doing and finding innovative ways to support arts in our community. Let me just take in the first week of January. On January 6th, I attended the EDC webinar designed for small businesses who want to avail themselves of the state grants. And I want to be sure people, businesses of, small businesses of all size, are aware that this is the window now to register. But there's two more days left in that grant cycle. The 13th is when it closes. But if anyone has not taken, that's a small business owner or involved, has not taken advantage of that grant application, I would strongly encourage you to do so. I am a small business owner and my husband and I took some time to complete the grant. I don't know that we'll be selected, but I wanted to just give, share a little bit of the experience so people are mindful of it. It is really, there's just some basic things that are required to be filed, required to be uploaded. But it's just some general information. But one of the things it does is it asks you to compare your revenue for two quarters between 2019 and 2020, the second, third quarter, which is of course when COVID really started raging in our community. It was actually instructive for me to go through that exercise just to see how it had impacted my little business. My little business was deemed essential. And I felt even guilty sharing that because I thought it was so unfair that some are essential and some are not. In my case, I think our business, I found we had lost 20% of our income during that time period, which probably is minimal compared to so many others. But so I, anyway, so I don't know that we would receive a grant. But I want to encourage those who have been affected, any small business owner, please, please, please. I would love to see Simi Valley really take advantage of that granting opportunity. And the grants range in price from, or in size from $5,000 to $25,000 based on your annual sales. And it's a business up to $2.5 million. So if you make $10,000 a year or if you make $2 million a year with your small business, know that you are the target for this state grant. And as I understand, they've raised it to $1 billion that the state has authorized in grant funds. And so I would very much like Simi Valley to be the recipient of a good chunk of that money because we need it and our poor businesses are truly affected. And of course, when I say businesses, that means the employees that work for them and the owners that are trying to keep their employees employed. So just one other thing, on January 7th, I attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee Meeting and they voted on a Climate Change Action Resolution where the first goal was to produce innovative solutions that improve the quality of life for Southern California. And there were other reports as well, but I don't want to take too much more time. This is a time for us to be working together and helping each other as best as we can. So that's my encouragement, that we stay safe, that certainly we wear our masks and follow the guidelines in terms of social distancing and being where we should. But do all that we can to help those that are struggling. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long time since our last report. During that time, I'd really like to give thanks to staff and because I get a lot of calls from citizens and, you know, basically I'm always calling Brian saying, hey, I need this done or can you get this done or what does this do or how do we fix this? And staff gets it done. People think that's great because I'm just so happy that we're able to get stuff done for people. You know, because we're not having a lot of meetings and we were on a break for a long time there. I also want to say I hope everybody had a great Christmas and a happy new year and, you know, a good holiday season in general. I know we're all locked up at home, but I hope everybody made the best of it. Since we met last, the big things I'm going to hit on was the, I'm really happy to see Marie Bennett get the Strathairn Lifetime Achievement Award. That was awesome. I was on that Zoom call and that was great. And the way they tricked her into it was pretty funny too. On Friday, January, or excuse me, on Thursday, January 7th, I attended the SCAG Regional Council Meeting and the Transportation Committee for VCTC. And like Elaine said, the big thing was we all voted on the climate change resolution for SCAG in the regional council of transportation. It wasn't really too much new. And we are passing our safety, you know, guidelines, safety goals we want to put forward because there's a lot of, you know, talking about fatalities on the road earlier and when we were talking with the police department about the grant, traffic fatalities are region wide. They're horrible. We have a lot. We have more than we should. So SCAG's Transportation Committee is going to be putting forward to the regional council the goals for safety, road safety very shortly. On Friday, January 8th, we had a VCTC meeting and we went over a couple of things there and not too much affecting Simi Valley. Today, I had a Council on Aging meeting and I wanted to say congratulations to Ed Mazieko for winning the Wayne Templeton Award. That's outstanding and well deserved. And that'll be coming back to the council soon when we, I guess, award it to him. That's about all I have for my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with a comment or a statement regarding the June 6th, the event. So June 6th was a dark day and yet another sad chapter as the very tenets of our American democratic process were unsuccessfully challenged in a despicable and dishonorable manner. Differing political beliefs, the ability to freely discuss them in a transparent and legitimate election process are what make America great. Mob's assaulting and threatening our elected congress members is never the answer to disappointment and it is not representative of our nation. The peaceful transition of power is a hallmark of our proud democratic history and it must be upheld at all times. I support this process wholly and steadfastly. That statement was actually written by somebody else, but I read it and felt it was by somebody I work with. And I just felt it really addressed the situation and my belief, so I wanted to use that. In regards to the calendar, on December 16th, I was also on the county, excuse me, the Simi Valley Veterans Task Force Meeting with Councilmember Lister. Hopefully, we're going to be moving a little bit forward with that. Like she said, the idea is to get a common place for them to all meet and have services. But the key is going to be getting all the different military groups to work together. So that's the challenge right now on that. I also had a Simi Valley Police Foundation Zoom call that morning. The Police Foundation still continues to fund requests made from our police department. When the chief sends it, he gets it. It's pretty much what we do. It's pretty much what we do. On December 17, our EDC Board meeting was dark for the month. And I hope everyone had a happy holiday over the Christmas and the New Years. Our elected officials' call was canceled on the one day. On December 29, I also attended the Chambers Surprise Award to Marie Bennett for the Strathern Lifetime Achievement Award. I agree with both Councilmember Judge and Littler. The look on her face, she was kind of like, I would have at least combed my hair or put my makeup on or something, but she was, she was very, very excited, very thrilled. If you've never met her, she is just a wonderful lady. Go, go, go. We'll do anything you ask of her, and she's just wonderful to work with. I attended all the Ventura County elected officials' calls along with everybody else. On Tuesday, January 5, I had the pleasure of attending the Simi Valley Education Foundation Surprise Teacher of the Month. The Councilmember Littler was there, and she's also on their board, I believe. And it really was a lot of fun because it was for Hollow Hills, which I'm an alumni of, so I love to say that, but I won't tell you what year I was there. And Mrs. Deborah Merriman was the award recipient, and she was very excited. So congratulations to her. On Wednesday, January 6, we had our county elected officials' call. What I found, a couple of little things that came out of that call is, one, the county has changed their testing lab, and so they're expecting faster results, and they're seeing them, and they're expecting that to stay going. Also, the county is looking and was looking to put $20 million aside for additional small business grants. And the state, partially in the state, was having another 10 to 12 million for rental assistance that should be coming up pretty soon. So they, they were announcing that. I know some of this comes from the Board of Supervisors, but the rest will be coming through different entities. That leads me to my January 7 meeting, which is the EDC, the Economic Development Collaborative. We had our Executive Board meeting. I just want to remind you, grants and rental assistance and applying for small business loans, micro loans, is available through the EDC. It's edcollaborative.com. They will help you with anything. They will help you with the paperwork. They will help you with the business plan. They have, we have over 30 volunteer consultants in different areas that are free to our business community. And our EDC here in Ventura County is, has been nationally recognized as one of the best. They do, Bruce and his staff there do an absolutely fantastic job. Couple of the things that were told to us in that meeting is the broadband consortium is moving ahead and actually doing very well so far in the county. The EDC had 800 clients a year ago, and now they have 2,000. So that will tell you the difference, just the partial difference that COVID has caused. They constantly have new programs coming up. So if you go to their edcollaborative.com, on the right hand side, they have a banner, and you can click on there and find out lots of information. They are also multi languages available, so that's also beneficial. One of the things I found very interesting in that meeting, it didn't really have to do with the EDC, is the outgoing chair is Nan Drake, and she's with EJ Harrison, which is Waste Management down the Camrio, Oxnard area. They are starting a new recycling program from food waste. So they're, they're going to be picking up food waste from food retailers and developing a way to reuse that waste, whether it be in fertilizers or varying foods for different, maybe animals or different types of things. But they're starting that, and I think that's going to be a very interesting thing for us to see in the, in the coming years. As a banker, I just want to remind you all, PPP, the second round of loans, are coming. So, and most of the banks are very prepared this time when they weren't the first time. So get ready, talk to your bank. If you didn't apply for one the first time, apply for it now. If you applied for it, apply for it again. Contact whoever it is, is helping you. And again, a reminder that under $115,000 PPP loans are being forgiven, so make sure you contact whoever helped you with your loan. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Myself, I'll make it brief because I'm going to go over what I think would be appropriate for the council members to hear what I had done. On Friday, December 18, I met with Michelle Walden, and she's the new manager of the Simi Valley Town Center Mall. And it was more of a, an introduction to her and exchange of phone numbers and hi, how are you, that type of thing. No hardcore business decisions, anything like that, or even questions, just getting that door open seems very approachable. I'm looking forward, if you go up to the Town Center, I think anybody can notice the change in landscaping and cleanliness of the facility. It's all seemed to be on the upswing, which is, this is a very challenging time for everybody, as we know, and it seems like they're, they're putting in a major effort. And she intends on reaching out to each council member in the very near future. It's not just a mayor or city manager thing, it'll be, all of us will be included. One thing that I was, I reported last time that at the tourism meeting that I had encouraged the tourism folks to, hey, we, with this COVID time, we're not getting a lot of people based on the COVID restrictions, and we have these biking trails all over the, just on the outskirts of probably the city limits, but they're very, very close. They have a major impact on the city. And sure enough, they went to work on it and just, I don't know if it was last issue, whatever, Acorn did a, some kind of article mentioning the bike trails and what have you, and I think that's good, and it's, it's where you can go out and do something and not be restricted to, you know, an indoor, keeping six foot away because anybody see, you know, the riders, most of them are very rare, they real close to each other. And the hikers, the same thing, they're, everybody seems to keep a good distance, and with the weather way it's been, it's a, it's a great outing, even for the family. Unfortunately, the Arts Commission meeting, I got here about an hour late, and so rather than barge in in the middle of it on a Zoom meeting, I sat the rest of the meeting out, so I apologize for being stuck in traffic coming from the LA area. I, too, attended the Strathern Lifetime Achievement Award, and I share the same sentiments regarding Marie Bennett. I mean, what an incredible lady and a treasure here in the community. Did the COVID calls, I think one of them was counseled. And then last week, took a few days and went away and got, got away all by ourselves. And it's kind of odd, you go away and didn't do a thing because you can't go anywhere, but, but at least we were, we were out and about. And I'd like to, once again, say, our city is at a critical time, and I think what we need to do is focus, focus deeply on what we can do. While you're talking about EDC, VC, VC, EDC, I'm, I'm going, okay, I got to talk to DeeDee. I want to talk to her, and of course, I know how much they do for the community, but I also know that for some reason, the East County does not take advantage of what is offered. And so I think one of the ways we can improve our service to our business community is to get the word out, and I'll be talking to you to, to get the necessary information, how to easily do that. Sometimes just sending people or writing down a, a website and say, here, go look at it, that's not enough. And so I'm on board, and I want to help you in any way I can to get the word out because I, I think some of us that are not in business and haven't been for quite some time, like, like Elaine is currently, we tend to forget on how stressful it is. And with the reduction in income because of the COVID requirements, I, I think that we ought to be exploring and digging deep, coming up with what can we do? Now, one, one of the things, I heard the speaker, the first speaker that talked about not wearing a mask. Well, I, I don't agree with not wearing a mask, but I do have a desire to be able to explain to the restaurants where the data is coming that says outside dining is, is a cause, and a cause where you can no longer have outside dining. And I'm not fighting them, I'm not complaining, I just want to know, where can we get that data? So, because the frustration level for these restaurants is huge. They invested big money in outside tents or patios and what have you. And now they're being told, once they spend all the money on that, they're being told, nope, can't do that, that's how COVID gets spread. And, and so myself and they, too, okay, we agree, anything that can help stop the spread, you know, we're all for it. But it's been a long time. Now we want to see, how did you come up with that? And just give us the justification, explanation, and that allows city folks like ourselves to explain to those that were asking to not do it and maybe prevent some of these, I'll, I'll call them renegade type operations where they're having secret meetings and secret entries into the restaurants and what have you, to where you can go in and have a meal with a group of people, which we all know is not, not the answer. So that's something that I'll be requesting and see if we can get that. I think that would be coming from the state, I'm not sure. But I, I think it's time that we get out in the community even more and, and, and start viewing. I, unfortunately, we talked to, with the Planning Department and with the city manager about what we were going to do for people after COVID. Well, that, that talk was a little premature because here we are now with COVID getting worse and worse by the, literally the minute. And so now it's, it's forget what we're going to do when it's over. What are we going to do now? Because we have a lot of suffering people, and I don't want to make light of when I said that we also have a population that is under incredible stress, and we better start looking at the healthcare issues and how to get people some type of service because the stress level is, is just absolutely huge. And I don't know the figures, but all, every time you turn around, you're hearing about another suicide, and we don't want to hear about those. We, we want to stop them. So anyway, that's my hijacking the calendar to give my little bit of a talk there. And of course, I wish everybody, and I hope everybody had a good holiday. And that's it.
Mayor, respectfully, I will gladly send you the CDC report about the transmission rate of asymptomatic people, if you would like that.
Okay, yeah, if you could.
I'll send it to the, I'll send it to Brian, and Brian can disseminate it.
Yeah, you get one for all of us, I think that's a good idea. Okay, let's see here, where are we? Okay, we're at 9B now. So we'll start with Councilmember Lou Avinos, 9B.
This is, this is not a 9B request, but it's a follow up. Mayor, you just mentioned suicides and mental health issues that I know were mentioned by a speaker, so I would, I would just like a status update, if not at this meeting, at the next meeting, with regard to the mental health task force that I had requested be formed by the city, especially since there is such a great need for mental health support. So I, I would just like an update at some point in the near future on the mental health task force. I, I received a letter from David Gearing, this is a request, another follow up on a 9B request. Previous 9B request with regard to accountability for SoCal Edison, I received a letter from David Gearing, who asked about the SoCal Edison's making sure that they are held accountable, but along with that, internet and outages from Time Warner Spectrum with regard to the PSPS outages and how he has incurred over almost $1,500 of unplanned costs for generators, surge suppressors, power supplies, propane tanks, and replaced electronics damaged by surges. And so I, I would just like to know, if not this meeting, then the next meeting, when we are going to ask SCE or demand SCE come and answer questions of the residents of the City of Simi Valley, who's had more power shutdowns than any other city in the region. My 9B requests are, I had stated previously, for the city to draft a resolution to condemn the attacks on the US Capitol, to fly, my second 9B request is to fly the flag at half mast for fallen US Capitol Officer Brian Saznik, who gave his life in the line of duty.
I believe it's being done already. It's already done, yeah, take that one down because, or that request is already.
I'll check it out, I'll check it out. Okay, and then I, I, my third 9B request is with regard to accountability for law enforcement. We have our own police department, there are a lot of police departments around the country, including here in California, like the Oakland Police Department, that has looked at the policies with regard to hate speech and any law enforcement officers that participated in the, in the actions that incited violence and domestic terrorism at the US Capitol on January 6, that those officers be held accountable because there has been shown several studies and reports in the AP and several reports showing that there is a connection between those who were, there's even elected officials that were part of the violent domestic terrorism attack on the US Capitol and the duly elected officials there. So I'd like a report from our police department on what accountability measures there are, and if there is accountability being held for our own local police department to make sure that we have trust between the community and our police force. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, as long as it's very non. Yeah, let's do that, and we'll bring it back right away. Okay. Okay, I have, let's see, who's next? You don't have anything? Okay, great. Judge hasn't said anything, no. DeeDee, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, I, I want to bring up something that I would like to, with no urgency, but something in the future. With our research on the Planning Commission appointment, as I read the thing and went into the municipal code and looked at what we're doing, I would encourage that we have a discussion amongst council members at a future date, no, no urgency, that in the future, we look at how we select our Planning Commission members. I think there's an opportunity that we could put out a notice and accept applications and take multiple applications of people at different levels, and then the entire council would receive those applications and then have a, a voting or something like that. But in other words, let's look at a, a different municipal code instructions and look at a way that we could reach out to the community and put out to the community, because the way we're doing it now, and I, I, we're not doing it wrong, we're just, we can improve. As I see it, me being able to choose one person, and that stifles many others that may be interested in serving and may have special talent in this area, and they don't even ask for it because the way it is now, we go to these people. And currently, I, I think what we do is we tend to, whoever helped us the most on a campaign, whoever did this, or this friend said he was interested, and I would rather see something put out that, hey, we have, we have an opening if you're interested, just like a neighborhood council application and other committees, and, and do it that way. And my whole intent is, can we build a stronger Simi Valley Planning Commission? And not to eliminate anybody that's on it, I didn't bring it up earlier in the evening because I, it would, to me, it would have been unfair to bring it up right on a night someone's being appointed. So it's definitely for down the road future. Anyway, so I would be looking for a second to at least bring that up for a discussion.
One second, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, that is it then. Yeah. Unfortunately, we've talked a lot about COVID and one of our pillars of the community, Steve Manuels, passed away sometime right after Christmas. For those of you who don't know Steve, he was a, I guess you'd call him a developer, property owner in the city and just an absolute character. And I, I had coffee with him pretty much every morning and he gave me a hard time every morning. And he, he's just one of those guys like Marie Bennett. He, it's a, a pillar here in the community. And we lost Steve a few days ago. And to add to that, his wife, Linda, is in the hospital with COVID and struggling to get well. And, and then add to that even more, their daughter was in the hospital with COVID when Steve passed away. So that, that goes back to our mental health issues and stuff. These people are suffering, they're suffering and we, we need to do whatever we can. But at any rate, it, it's very discouraging to have to say that tonight we're going to adjourn in the memory of Steve Manuels. And with that, we're adjourned.